Good evening and welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of Thursday, August 28th, 2014. If we could all please rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start off the meeting with approval of acceptance of warrants number 07V-15, 09V-15, 06P-15, and 08P-15. So moved. Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We have no student rep yet. I'm looking forward to that, the next meeting, I hope, the next meeting. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to discuss anything on the agenda?
Sure.
Mr. Patel, nice to see you.
Nice to see you as well. I just wanted to come to tonight's meeting on behalf of the GEA and officially inform the rest of the committee that we are retracting our request to sever Kaiser School and College. It was a very difficult summer and I wanted to come down here and thank both school committee chairperson Barbie LaNarvas and superintendent Jacobs for their leadership and guidance throughout this whole issue this summer. Without their help, without their support, we may not come to the right decision. We did come to the right decision and we came to the right decision collaboratively. And that's what I wanted to come down and just thank them for their help and guidance because it was a difficult summer this year and we came to the right decision because we did our homework and we reached out and we met the proper people and we got all the information needed. And although it caused a little rift with some of our members, as a union, I think we're stronger. And I just wanted to come down on behalf of the GEA and thank you both for your time and support this summer.
Oh, well, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
I'm glad that it did work out as well as it did and you're right. I think we worked very well collaboratively. I do think we came up with the right decision and I think once we had, you know, both sides, it was really a very enlightened meeting and I'm glad that we could work together.
I agree. I agree. I know Mike wanted to be here as well and he supports everything that we just discussed as well.
That's great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you next week.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm pleased to introduce the new technology director, Wes Slevon.
At long last.
I didn't know if you were really like a real person.
I'm really here. Really happy to be here.
It's very nice to meet you.
To meet you all, too.
I've heard great things.
You've got great things going on here and I just hope to move that further and faster along as best I can.
Good. Why don't you just tell the committee a little bit about you, Wes, and what you've been up to for a couple of months here?
Well, yeah.
I mean, you don't have two hours to go through the thirty things you've worked on.
I've heard you've been very busy. I've heard you've been working with a lot of different committees.
Oh, you got that. Well, that's always true anyway of my position. My position is one that has to work with everybody and it is a busy position and it should be. I've been doing this now in schools for fifteen years. I've been technology for twenty. I did a job at Bell's Falls for fifteen years and I did a little bit for Winchester School District as well. So I've been, I have quite a bit of experience in all different walks of life.
Is that Winchester, Mass?
This district of Hampshire. Yeah. I was up in western New Hampshire where I'm from. And, you know, I started out with the old, very old machines and absolutely no network, absolutely nothing. I started from scratch there and built up to what they have today. And they had, I would consider very up-to-date technology in all schools. And we did on shoestring budgets and grants we find here, there, and everywhere. We scrapped together quite a bit of stuff, but in the end, they're in really good shape. They've got a nice wide area network between the schools. They've got mobile labs and mobile units and they have iPads, Chromebooks, you name it, they've got it. And it took a lot of work for everybody, but we all work together as a team and that's what I hope to bring here. I'm very much team-oriented. I'm not a showboat. I want to get everybody involved. One of the first things I want to get going here is starting a district tech committee so we can all get together as a group. And I usually have a very, very open tent. I don't go around looking for people that are really good in technology. I look for everybody. Anybody who wants input, anybody who wants to see what direction the school district is going to go in in technology, I want them there because everybody has an input.
Yeah, because some people are a little intimidated by technology. So those would be the, right.
Yeah, exactly. And if they come to our meetings, I can, we can, you know, lay some of their fears and they can have a say in what direction everything goes in.
Right.
And I think that's very important. So that's, that's a really important thing for me to start pretty much right away. I've been working with the new school buil-- I'm sorry. I'm going to take this out. I live with it. Anyway, I've been working with the, looking at the new school building and how things are going there. I've been progressing towards finding a good network backbone for their wireless situation that's going to work for the school. Throughout the entire district, I think wireless is extremely important. We're not, no longer working on, you know, physical laptops like this one or something that's attached to the wire. Everything's going wireless. All our devices are going wireless. So it's important to have a really good wireless infrastructure. On top of that, it's also very important to have a really strong internet backbone and connection. So I'm working with a couple of companies I'm exploring for out here to find out what we can do to upgrade that. Once those two things are in place, I think any way, direction we want to go in with technology, we can do it. It's no longer, you know, it's not as important for wired anymore as it is for wireless and internet connection. Internet connection is extremely important. I got to a point up north where I actually had a fiber optic connection to the schools, but I also backed it up with a Comcast connection just to make sure that they're always on because everybody uses it for everything on the school. We did a very good job integrating technology throughout the entire curriculum, which is what I will also work to do for here because it's very important that we do it everywhere. And we had kindergartners right through the seniors using, you name it, they were using it. So if that's important. The other thing, one of my big initiatives is going to be starting using Google Apps for education. Barry has it all set up already. So that makes, wasn't one less thing I have to do, but getting teachers trained on how to use it and how to collaborate with it is going to take a little bit of time. But once that, you give it to the students and it just rolls. And it's, it's very important. It does a lot for students. It gives them a place where they can put their, post their work. They can share with their teacher. They don't have to worry about losing it. It's always going to be online. It's always going to be up there on the cloud. I instituted that three years ago in Bell's Falls and it took us less than a year to get everybody from K through twelve using it. It was that fast and that dynamic. So that's, we'll do that here, too.
So you're going to have an office at Pembroke?
That is where I'll start, yeah. It's nice to be close to the new building and be more on the pulse of what's going on there. I won't stay there a lot. I'll be in between buildings all the time. I don't see me being glued to a chair. I don't like doing that anyway. I'd rather be around and see how are things going and what's, what's working. I have a lot of people to meet, just you all, but I got a lot of teachers and staff to meet, to find out where they are and what they want to, where they want to go. So there's a lot of that going to be going the next couple of months. I'm going to be busier than I was during the summer because of that. That takes time. I'm also looking at phone systems because with a new school coming on, it makes sense to put a new phone system in. Again, that may be, I was thinking about that. I've been going through a bunch of vendors and looking at different products and the reality is most teachers have cell phones. Maybe you don't need phones in every classroom. We just have a portable number that they can attach to their device. And I've been looking at that sort of technology because the phones, the wired phones are really pretty much going down, going, going away. I mean--
Landlines.
Yeah, landlines and even phones with cords. I mean, everybody has a cellphone. Everybody has a laptop. A lot of them have iPads and iPods. All those things have used as telephones. I'm exploring that sort of thing. I got a listing here a mile long of things I'm probably just going to work me on this year. I'm worried with all of them, but I have quite a few goals set. I think it's, I think I'm down to, yeah, I'm down to eighteen now, so.
It's great. I'm shocked.
Bring you up to twenty there.
Probably not, probably won't be too far out of the imagination going, going that far. There's a lot of things I want to do, a lot of things I want to hand in. I certainly want to get involved in the curriculum. It's, it's been great coming here and this is a totally different environment than I'm used to. I mean, I was used to a very, very poor school district with very little money, but they still, they had a lot, but they had a lot of support. They had a lot of support with--
And we're different house.
We're not a house.
I'm not talking about your school budget necessarily. It's your, it's your surrounding--
It's a beautiful community.
Well, in a sense, you know, many students have smartphone and--
Correct.
Because they do cost.
And Wes, actually, when he, when he got here and he, he went around, we were talking about this today, he said, you know, we, we are in a lot better shape than he thought we would be.
Oh, that's nice to hear.
Given what he, given what he heard. And, I mean, we have done a lot in technology thanks to the generous donations of GEF, PTA, parents, you know, grants that people have written. The town through the override, you know, really helped us out with some technology. So wherever we've been able to take our plan and find a source to fund it, you know, so I, I've always been proud of the fact that we had the five-year plan and we will look back at it without any designated money, the amount of things that we have been able to do. But, you know, there's a lot more to do and, you know, we're excited about the new proj, new school project, bringing some in and then looking at what we might be able to do at the high school. So.
It's a process.
It's a process.
Takes time. But, you know, if we keep a steady direction and a steady eye on our goals, we get it accomplished.
And it sounds like you're going to invite a lot of teacher administrative feedback.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Like you said, we're all a team here and I'm a big team player.
Comfortable with what, what kind of expertise different, you know, staff members already they have could share with others and, yeah.
He's already found some people. Is that what we're going to tap into then?
A lot of very creative, informed staff.
That's great.
I just, you know, want to welcome you. I was on the hiring committee and so I, I put my face over there. And I'm just so pleased that, you know, we, you were able to be with us and--
Yeah, I'm really happy to be here.
Glad to have you.
It's going to be a good challenge, but it's, I like a challenge and I like to work hard and this is, take that for something.
It's hard to leave, it's hard to leave a place after fifteen years.
I know. When I was in Greenville for twenty-five, it's, it's not just a job, you know. It's, you know, your friendships, you know, people, connections, there's all kinds of things. It's not easy to leave, you know. So, you know, I give Wes a lot of credit, you know, but he, he was, he's the right fit for us and we're thrilled he's here. Yes, we are.
Any other questions?
I'm sure we will.
And we had our administrative retreat. We went through the strategic plan because obviously we're going to discuss it with you in October. And, you know, Wes pitched right in, you know, he'll add his goal five technology and information management. And now we'll have somebody who will actually focus their attention on getting those done.
Yeah, getting data online is something this district does need. It's too disparate. There's too many different places that things are stored. And we also need to be checking, we need to be tracking kids from K-12, K through twelve. I mean, they all should be on one database and we should be watching and following. You've started with the maps, map program for assessment. That's, I've worked with that a couple of years. It's really nice. And once you start getting enough data on it, it's really an amazing tool to track what students are doing, where they need help, where they don't need help, where they're excelling, where they're not. It's a big, big tool for a teacher.
It's very exciting.
But we have to try and get over the fact that it's not something that's penalizing. It's showing them what they need to, what they need to concentrate on for the students because everything we do here is for the students, not for anybody else.
That's right. That's right. Well, that's great. Welcome.
Thank you.
I'm very happy to finally meet you.
I am very happy to meet you.
And I'm looking forward to seeing you around the schools.
So what we'll do, you know, when we put together the list of the topics for the year, you know, how we had updates from Julie and Wellness Committee, we'll, and Mike, we'll put some updates for Wes, at least a couple. So we'll know when that technology committee is--
Oh, yeah.
Do you all want to be invited? I've had school board members on my committee before. I've had parents.
Just have to make sure you're on the forum.
It's hard to get students in on it, but, you know, I usually get most of staff in on it. I certainly have always had at least one or two school members, board members.
It doesn't need an advisory committee, right?
I was curious, what's the target size of that? I don't have a target size. If I can get a whole room full of people, I'm ecstatic. It's hard. Everybody's busy. I mean, teachers are always busy, the staff are busy. It's not easy to get a committee together. It's not always going to be the same people. Right. I will try and make it as much as I possibly can the same people, but it's not always easy. But like I said, I like a big tent. Let everybody in, everybody input. It can be a little dynamic. It can be overwhelming.
I mean, that kind of reminds me of Health and Wellness Committee that we have, you know. It's wonderful when we get a whole lot of people coming to one meeting, but they can't always make it to every meeting.
Right.
You end up kind of with a core group of people who are able to make it, but--
Yeah.
Everybody's welcome who has an interest, a concern, ideas to share. They're all welcome.
Good. We'll keep us updated on that.
Will do.
I guess I'm sure one or more of us will love to, would love to attend. But thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wes.
Good luck. Okay, next on the agenda, Mr. Brian Duke.
Hello.
Hi, thank you for coming.
Thank you. As you can imagine, I probably, I had a more emboldened and impassioned speech to deliver, but with every--
Joke's going out of your sails. What happens?
We already talked before the meeting. So it really just comes down to, I just want to express that, you know, I didn't go to Gordon, but my wife did. I have a lot of ties to Gordon and they are by far, as you know, from this conversation, from the meetings you had, the least discriminatory place you could think of. So I applaud you guys for handling this, I believe, the right way and coming to the right decision, much like Mr. Patel said already as well. So thank you. I really just want to express gratitude on that front.
Oh, well, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. I appreciate you hanging out and letting us know that.
Yeah, no problem at all. Like I said, I had a much bigger speech, but might as well leave it and keep it simple.
I'm glad that you don't have to deliver. Even though I would have loved to have heard it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbie, I just turned this four-hour meeting into--
My husband, thanks, Joe. I still think you need to be at the end, Joe, for your home.
Okay, next on the agenda, Mr. Thomas Mulligan, about the turf field.
Tom has a letter.
Yes.
I enjoy reading this letter very much.
Thank you. I do have additional copies if someone does not have one. My name is Tom Mulligan from Seventy Bailey Lane. I want to thank the chairperson and the board, the superintendent, and especially Laura for getting me on the agenda and actually helping me with some information and stuff. My goal here tonight is to really just open up a dialogue on the possibility of naming the high school football field in memory of Jim Collmore. A little bit about myself, lifelong resident, graduated from Georgetown in nineteen eighty-one. My two children just graduated this year. Just dropped Thomas off at Westfield yesterday. Emily's Saturday.
That's what happens with twins. They both go on to--
Same to each other.
Opposite schools, first time they've been away from each other.
I'm sure they'll do great.
I'm also a former assistant football coach at the high school, one of the founding members of the Georgetown Flag Football, and past member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Personnel Board, past president of Georgetown Athletic Association, and Georgetown Alumni Sports Association. Georgetown Alumni Sports Association, if you picture partners, twenty-five years ago, we used to run the Turkey Bowl every year as a fundraiser for the sports programs up to high school.
What, it's a turkey bowl?
Back when Georgetown played the Saturday before Thanksgiving against Manchester, we had no Thanksgiving Day game.
Oh, okay.
So in nineteen eighty-one, the time of user fees, a group of former alums led by Frankie Getchel, Doug Demento, Mike Ryan, and Jimmy Gracio got the bright idea one night, let's have a full-contact football game with the alumni. And for the next almost twelve years, every Thanksgiving Day, a white team and a blue team of alum would get out there and play a full-contact football game on Thanksgiving. I think we raised over seventeen thousand dollars. It was a lot of fun.
Yeah, that's interesting.
And it was actually--
And why did you stop?
The school committee at that point decided to have the football, the high school football game on Thanksgiving.
Oh, got it. Okay, okay.
And it was kind of sad because, well, no, because we, we really never had a problem getting players. And what was nice about it, it was like a reunion weekend.
Sure.
And it really was. So it was fun.
Maybe you should do it on the day after Thanksgiving when people are home.
We tried the Saturday after.
Oh, okay.
And just--
It's too hard.
By the time you get the equipment issued out, because we use the high school equipment, by the time you get it out, you have so many people traveling back home on that weekend. It really, I think they did the last three years, I think they did it on the Saturday. And then the weather at that point, believe it or not, it's a crapshoot.
Well, now you have a turf field.
Exactly, exactly.
I will reconsider.
Yep, yep. But I will not be playing. My days are over.
Your days are over.
Yep. So as I said, I really wanted to open up a dialogue. I wrote up the letter. I just have some summary here that if I could touch on with you folks. A little bit about Jim Collmore. After serving his country as a Marine in the early to mid nineteen fifties, he returned home, got his bachelor's degree, and then a master's degree from Springfield College. Then in nineteen sixty-one, he was hired as a phys ed teacher and the first high school football coach at the new high school when it moved from Pearlie to the high school. And then in nineteen sixty-three, he christened the new football field at the high school. And that year, he posted a five-and-two record and actually won the KPM League. He would go on to coach for two-hundred-and-sixty-five games over a twenty-eight-year period, and he would teach for a total of thirty-three years, all of which up the high school. He would also be athletic director from nineteen sixty-four until I believe it was nineteen eighty-eight. He also coached wrestling, basketball, and track. In nineteen ninety-two, he was inducted into the Massachusetts High School Football Coach Association. He and his wife, Anne, have lived in Georgetown since nineteen sixty-one, raised four children. All four children went to Georgetown High School, participated in every sport imaginable at the high school. And coming here, Jim passed away in July, and after some dialogue with some fellow alums, some other folks around town, it just seemed the right thing to do. And there are a number of local coaches that actually got their start at Georgetown High School. One of them is Central Catholics Chuck Adamopolis, wrestling coach Mel Young, Bob Duggan, who went on to coach at a few other local high schools, and myself, who coached at Georgetown-Davis for a while. I've spoken to Jim's wife, Anne. I've spoken to his children. They're very much in favor of this. Countless alums reached out to Athletic Director Chris DeFranco to get their support. I've also reached out to Mark Perry and John Pingery of the GAA since they've done so much work with the synthetic field. I did not want to offend them in any ways. We're lifelong friends. The three of us all grew up together, played on all the same youth teams and then various high school teams together. They could not be more supportive of this idea of naming the field in memory of Jim Collmore. How I look at it, it kind of hit me tonight in thinking about it, with the brand-new synthetic field coming online, to name it after the person that christened the original football field up there, then stayed there for twenty-eight years. I really just think would be very appropriate. I did go through the packet that Laura sent me over, over the criteria. And how I see it, there's two points that have to be reached. School buildings or facilities within the schools shall be named only for persons who actively contributed to the public school, either as a member of the school staff or as a member of school-oriented committee such as school council, the school building committee, or the school committee over a period of more than twenty years. He exceeds that, twenty-eight years as a coach, thirty-three years as a teacher. The building or facility shall be one appropriate to the person to be so wanted. I can't say enough. Not only did I have the good fortune of playing under Jim Collmore, I got to coach under him for six years. And I'll tell you, it was just an amazing thing to see and the respect he had for fellow coaches and football officials. And I remember a game, one of the older referees, I was a young kid, pulled me to the side before the game and we were chatting and stuff. And he used to call him Gentleman Jim because he never lost his composure on the sideline and stuff. He was just such a person that you'd really respect and admire. And I think just to pay a final tribute to him by naming the field, it would be a great honor. But I also think it would be an honor for the town to make a gesture like that. So like I said, I really came here tonight to open up a dialogue unless it's as simple as the board telling me, yep, it's a great idea, let's move forward, and September two thousand and fifteen, we'll do some type of dedication. But like I said, so. Any questions? I mean, where do we go from here?
Well, there's certainly no question that he does fit the two criteria that you had mentioned. It sounds like he was a very great individual. I, you know, read this and I was like, wow. And just the fact that you had written this, I'm like, wow, this, he had such an impact on you, which I think is, is, you know, wonderful. The question that I have for you is, my understanding is, he was asked before, before he passed on about some type of dedication to him.
Yep. He was asked, he was approached about naming the Thanksgiving Day football trophy. I think they were going to call it the Collmore slash Hardy, I think it was Hardy, was the longtime coach at Manchester. You really had to know Jim. Every year, you pick up the paper, read the previews. You hear all the other coaches, we're going to be this, we're going to be that. Jim, yeah, I think we'll go five.
Yeah. He was very humble. I met him--
Very humble.
Two or three times at football games. I was introduced to him by Dicky Spofford, you know, Bert Spofford's son.
Yeah.
And he was a very humble man, you know, very unpretentious, just loved the game.
Yeah.
Loved Georgetown. Went to watch the kids play. No kids on the team.
Yeah.
Just loved the program.
And he used to stand up close to the steps of the school and just lean up against the fence, would never go down on the field, would never, because I actually coached for Rowley Hinkley, who took over after Jim. Jim would never come down on the field, never interfere. It was just the way he was. And I did have this conversation with Anne. And Anne did recognize the fact that Jim didn't want any fan fear and would be embarrassed by any fan fear. But she thinks it would be a great tribute to his legacy and a great honor to name it and stuff. And just something simple and the Collmore Field, the Jim Collmore Field, or however it is done and everything. I do know Mark Perry was one of the folks that approached Jim about the trophy and stuff. And you really had to know Jim and that would give you the explanation and stuff. He'd rather see it go to somebody else, the trophy and stuff.
I'm just to hear that his wife and kids are in support of this.
Yeah, that, that's actually the first place I started. I spoke to the children and then I went down and I sat with Anne and talked to her. And Anne is also a former employee of the Georgetown School System. So, yeah.
Well, since this is never, a situation like this has never come across to me and to you either, Jim and Anne.
Right. No, I mean, I wrote, I wrote in the notes, there was initially a group that approached about doing it, dedicating it to another individual, but it never came through as a formal request.
Okay.
But the Varsity Baseball Field is dedicated to Irving Bean. It's the Irving Bean Field. The plaque is missing.
The plaque is missing. But there was, that's part of why I wanted to do the research on this field because I think there was some discussion about that field being named after someone else. And people said, some people called from the public and said, no, it's already named. But because there was no plaque or anything there and if you didn't--
On the football field?
No, on the baseball field.
Yeah, exactly.
So that's why I just wanted to make sure that the football field wasn't, the same thing wasn't going to happen.
Is there going to be a plaque on that?
Well, now that you mention it, we should do that.
The backstop was repaired.
Right.
They took down the chain link fence and they repaired it.
Right.
They took down the plaque.
The plaque is gone.
Oh, so there was a plaque.
So I was telling Chris that the plaque's probably in the shed sitting over there and stuff, and it's probably buried under a bag or something like that, believe it or not.
Well, we'll, we'll do something about that. We'll do something about that. I didn't know about that, so we'll do that.
And I would venture to guess when they dedicated the baseball field, it would have been around the time that Bunker Bean was the Varsity Baseball Coach. Because I think that's why they dedicated it in memory of his father. And his father was very instrumental in basically starting baseball in the youth little league movement back in the fifties and sixties.
I wonder if the school committee must have agreed to that at the time. So just wondering about when do you think that would have been, like in the fifties or?
No, no, no. Well, the dedication?
Yeah, when, when was it, when was it dedicated, do you think, around?
Late eighties, early nineties? Because I think that's when Bunker was the baseball coach. I mean, if you look through some yearbooks, probably--
Yeah, that's what I said. I just need to know where, about what year to look. Okay. We can do some research on that.
Okay, so what direction can you give me on this?
Well, again, it's the committee's call. You know, when, a few years ago, well, two thousand and seven, there wasn't a policy on this. And we, I think I put in the orange notes the process that we followed. The school committee at the time went to MASC, you know, Massachusetts-- The school committee at the time went to M A S C, Mass, you know, Massachusetts Association of School Committees. That helps develop policy across the, the state. And the policy that you have in your packet was adopted on the recommendation of M A S C. Obviously, you know, it, the committee at the time felt it was important not to, to just name things after people. That they wanted a criteria, which you identified Tom as the two important criteria. And I think it just rise, you have to decide whether or not the information that you have rises to the level of something that is. You know, is important enough to recognize someone who's made a long-term contribution. Because, you know, there might be people thirty years ago who thought somebody else needed to do it. I mean, so Tom's done his homework, he's come forward, he's done the background that you need, he's checked with all the important parties. But you never know what the public thinks, you know, so. You know, if you're asking my opinion, again, I think this gentleman, I met him a couple of times. He certainly, I think, rises to the level of someone who wasn't just your average person who made a commitment. Football was his thing, you're asking to, you know, to have the, the football field, you know, named after him, it is a new field. I, I certainly, it's not my call, but I could certainly support doing it. Because I do think that Coach Collumore was something special, he wasn't just a coach, you know, he, he touched a lot of lives. Unfortunately, it's people today don't know him. And that's always the hard thing when you're naming something after somebody that some people don't know. But that's why you memorialize contributions of people, you know, along the way. So, it, it's a, it's a school committee call, you know, I think the first thing you would have to do is make sure he meets the criteria in your policy. Because it would be a little hard if, if he didn't to, to make an exception. So, like I said, as long as the parents or the family doesn't have any objection, I think that was the only thing that I was wondering about. But it sounds like you've done your work talking to the family and they don't think he'd have an objection to it. Even though they know he probably wouldn't suggest it for himself, he wouldn't. That, that's always hard.
I was just wondering, you know, you bring up the point about public and how they may feel about it. Certainly, everything you've said, sounds like he's very deserving. And we would wanna go through the criteria, but I wonder if we put it on the next meeting agenda. Giving individuals an opportunity to come to the meeting and maybe raise another individual's name that maybe someone doesn't know. Or they'll be able to see it on here as a, as a recommendation.
So you mean like?
Put it on the next agenda for decision, gives us time to research it a little bit more.
Was it just information?
Right, just information. But then give the public an opportunity if there's anyone that strongly disagreed for any reason, I mean, it doesn't sound like it, but you. Maybe there's someone else, but you're giving them that opportunity.
But keep in mind, one of the things that I brought up is, we're looking at doing this September two thousand and fifteen, when the new field opens. So to your point, even if you put it out a month. So people could see it, anybody that sees this or reads about it in the paper.
Yeah, the police should.
If there are some people that might have some concern, I would be surprised. Having known the history at the school and everything, I would be very surprised, but.
Cause to me, if you do this, you want, you want people in town to talk about it, it's a great thing. You don't want a group of people to be talking about it any different way, I'm not saying they would.
I agree with you.
People in public the opportunity to, to come forth if they had.
The opportunity.
Or even folks to come forward in support of it. And might turn around and say, well, this is where, what I think and everything. And it was online condolences, I mean, to sit there and read. It, it was very interesting to read some of them from, folks said, not even from Georgetown. The Methuen High Wrestling Coach, when he was just starting, he even wrote about when he ran into Jim. Ten years later, Jim ran into him again and asked him about his tour. He just remembered things like that, so it would be, it would be able to give that opportunity, it would give you folks a chance to do a little research and investigations. Like that, if there's any concerns, then we can address it. And like I said, I'm here tonight to open up dialogue.
Yeah, no, it's great. I'm so glad you came forth and he sounds very deserving, he sounds like a wonderful candidate to have a field named after him, so. But I, I agree with you, Lorraine, that we should. Give some time to. Give some, just encourage people to. And maybe put it on the next agenda.
My only comment would not be to, I think you sort of said, you know, i- if there are other names that are worthy. It doesn't seem like it should be a competition. And I know, I just wanna make sure that it's not, it's not that and we're not, I don't think we're committing to naming the field and trying to find the right person. Where we have a person and we wanna name the field.
It's not like we're putting out a call for, you know, who should we name the field after, because otherwise, it's a different, it is a different question, I agree.
So we will put it on the next agenda. And we will vote at that time, and I really appreciate it that you come and.
And I really, I really do thank you for taking the time, because I just reached out to you, not even two weeks ago. And to get on the agenda and stuff, I, I do appreciate it and stuff and having the opportunity to come down. So when will that meeting be?
September eleventh.
Eleven?
September eleventh.
September eleventh. And you don't have to attend that meeting, but if you'd like to come on down, we'd love to have you.
Sure.
Always welcome.
I know some boards that wouldn't say that. Used to be lively on the Z B A.
I did notice former member of a couple of.
Yeah, well, my kids were, Pam will tell you, we did hockey and both, both kids all through. And my son ran cross-country, my daughter was an equestrian rider, so my time was eaten up pretty big. I might be getting bored sometime around.
I have to come back.
Yeah, so we'll see if Thomas makes the team.
Yeah, we'll see.
But I thank you very much for your time. And if you do have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Yeah, can we, could we let Mike come up?
Of course. Hi, Mike.
Hi, Mike, so, you know, maybe we could just talk about the tours? Mike, was there anything you wanted to point out?
Well, I'll can name some of the things we did at the schools for the people that weren't there. At the high school, we've, we've added fans to the cafeteria. We've added a new water filter, cooling water fountain with, that you can also fill water bottles with, right outside the cafeteria. We've done some bathroom floors over with epoxy flooring on the second floor.
I love it, it has glitter in it. And it shines. And it's glitter, it's beautiful.
It was a really short summer and all of the guys worked really hard to get the buildings clean. You know, we had the challenge of two camps at Pearlie and bouncing from room to room and stuff like that, so. Some of the things, Pembroke, we mostly focused on just getting it clean and getting it ready for school. And the grounds, the last week, we've really been trying to hustle to get them cleaned, because we've been working around the contractors and stuff like that. But I, as you can see, everything's really come together. And at Pearlie, basically, we just spent most of our time doing general maintenance and cleaning it up just to get ready for school. We did a lot of clearing on the side of the parking lot, taking down trees and putting down mulch to help out one of the neighbors and things like that. Painted the parking lots, uh, stuff.
One of the questions I do have at Pearlie is the, those orange.
Barriers.
Barriers.
We talked about getting rid of those last year, actually. They're up because to protect the people from the crosswalk. And if they're not there, people cut across and it, you know, it's a real safety for people crossing. Cause they try to exit by going across to get out into the other side of the parking lot.
Yeah, and we might be able to get something that's a little nicer looking.
I, I just love the outside of that school.
Yeah, and I really.
It's just such a pretty school, like when you drive by it, and then when you see that, I'm just like.
You're right.
Yeah, we could definitely look into that, we talked about that last year.
I can see the safety and I'm, I'm all for the safety, I just wonder if it could be maybe done a little differently.
Differently, yeah, absolutely.
And the Pearlie roof will be done next year, next summer, it will be done next summer.
They're gonna sign a contract tonight.
And, and it's fine to wait for that, that long.
Yes.
Yes, the slate roof.
Yes, it's, yeah, because it's only like a portion, it's only, they're just replacing two slates. And then the dentistry around the top and the, the downspouts. But we did do the.
Remortar all the brickwork.
Right, they're repointing some of the brickwork, and we did do the railing.
Yeah, and the steps out front.
And the steps out front.
Everything inside looks beautiful, immaculate.
And our two trees are growing out front.
We're watering them.
We're watering them, yeah, every day.
So, how, did you guys wanna talk about your tours?
Yeah, I mean, just to, I guess we stay what, what you said, there weren't, there weren't a lot of changes, other than the, um, yellow safety stripping.
At Pearlie, yeah.
At Pearlie on the stairs.
We did some rearranging at Pembroke in the front office area.
Yeah, but Pearlie was immaculate, I mean, you could skate on those floors.
I mean, honestly, the last two weeks, there hasn't been camping, the guys have really been working hard.
No, it looked great.
It's hard to get into a lot of big projects, cause there were so many kids there this summer.
The hard work shows.
What's the yellow strips?
Just safety strips.
On the stairs.
Yeah, like on the first step.
The top and bottom stairs.
But other than that, there was really nothing, yeah, no major changes. And considering everything, you know, we're going through at Pearlie, Pearlie looks great too, under the circumstances, it was also immaculate. Thought it was very clean.
We have ordered, I don't know if you noticed, in the first grade boys' bathroom, the partitions are rusted, there's new ones that have been ordered since June. But because of their custom size, we're waiting, they've been being made, so.
We had a fast trip, we didn't stop at the bathrooms. We were trying to get to.
We wish we got done that we hadn't this summer.
And the changes, I think at Pembroke with the, the teacher workrooms, I think are great.
Yeah, and our guys built that wall, so it really.
Created a teacher workroom.
Cut the principal's office. They built a wall in the principal's office, so it's two separate rooms. Why is it a teacher workroom?
Oh, so the teachers can call to parents and with privacy.
Get out all the clutter in that main office where they had the copier and people couldn't get by and the commotion and the noise level for Diane, so. They made a workroom.
So then where is the principal's office?
It's where speech was, which is right behind.
Directly, as soon as you. Right behind Diane.
Right behind Diane, yeah.
And then the assistant principal is off on the side.
With Donna.
Well, Donna's table used to be.
Half of Donna's office.
Office, right.
And then you made a nice seating area.
Yeah, that looks nice too.
Yeah. The children.
At Pembroke, they just made a seating area in the foyer.
So instead of the benches going this way, so you're always like you're being punished waiting for the principal. Margaret has created, or put a round table and created the benches and more of a, of a U, so that you can sit.
Is the bench still there?
But they're, they're now.
Three benches are shaped like a U or a C.
They're shaped like a U.
But you utilize those benches?
It wasn't one long bench, it was actually three benches.
Oh, right, because.
I just wanted to make it more of a, you know, pleasant seating area, here are magazines on the table, so, you know, when parents come, they can just sit and.
I'll have to go and look at it, show that looks good. Nice.
And then one other quick thing that we've been working on, myself and the food service director, we've put in recycled collection bins in the high school cafeteria. And we're gonna be doing recycling, mellow disposable donated, uh, recycling bins at all three schools for streamlined recycling. So we can take bottles, cans, paper, cardboard, and we can throw it all in this one dumpster and then he's gonna pick up the recycling for free.
Yeah, that's great. I hope the kids do it.
The, the water in the new drinking fountains, where does that water come from?
Well, it's Georgetown water, but it's filtered water, yeah.
Okay, that one is filtered.
Yeah, just that one.
Just that one. Yeah, no, we asked that, we asked that question.
Yeah. But you can like refill your bottle on there, and it has a little counter that tells you how many bottles we've saved from.
Oh, that's.
Being thrown out by refilling.
Cool.
And then so the filter would, would be changed?
Yeah, that has a little sensor on it, like it goes and it shows you, like it's getting close to time to change it too.
That's good. Yeah, Michael and I had the opportunity to walk through with Mike and Peter and I thought it looked great. Peter was able to tell us, you know, go through each room that was involved, that will be involved in the renovation project. So, I said to Michael and both to Mike that I just have a hard time when, when Peter says, okay, this is. I have a hard time thinking what it's gonna look like.
Yeah, that's hard.
You know, I, it sounds like it's gonna be great, but I just, I can't visualize it right now. Except for the gym, I can, I can see that happening, so.
Well, when they get to the design phase where they're actually designing the spaces, that's when you're gonna, that's when you're gonna see that.
Yeah, but the, it looked great, the carpets and, like, we were impressed with how well the carpets are and the, you know, they look good. The floors looked great, looked clean, the bathrooms looked clean, yeah.
Beautiful epoxy floors.
Aren't they beautiful? No, it was nice, I think the school was definitely ready and the fans really put off a lot of, you know, they were lined on both sides.
Half a dozen or, you wouldn't think that they would be.
Every on each side, or, yeah, yeah, it was nice. I think the kids will definitely appreciate that the first couple of weeks of school.
Yeah, cause there's a lot of sun in that room.
Yeah, there is.
At least it moves the air.
Yeah, and it was nice to look out the window and see the turf field underway. So, we were very happy to see that.
And the, the road in front of the school, it's kind of a driveway, somebody's done something to it, improved it, haven't they? Is it smoother than it was?
There was some potholes, we filled them all in, yeah.
That's what I'm talking about, filling the potholes, yes.
The maintenance guys Brett and Jack filled in all the potholes.
That's fantastic.
Were you talking just the street going in?
Yeah, when you drive to the back driveway.
Yeah, there was some.
And there's a new sidewalk going in the town, put the new sidewalk in.
Yeah, that looks great, much better. We needed that the, the whole way up, because now kids, I know when people, in the crosswalk where the crossing guard stands. Some parents pull over there and kids couldn't, it was very narrow, but now that there's a sidewalk there, they can't do that. So I think safety wise, it's gonna be a lot better.
Yeah, and we, we actually owe thanks to Peter Dirkie, cause his, him and his guys helped us clear all the old bleachers and stuff off the football field, so they could start the project.
And they took down the big tower.
Yeah, they took down the tower, so, so, yeah, the highway project really helped out.
Paid some people to come in and take some of the trees down. So it's really a community, really a community effort. That's wonderful.
And I think that's what the G A A has always wanted too, like to make it just like a.
Community thing.
Community thing, which, which is gonna, it's gonna be great.
Yeah.
It's exciting, so the seniors or they can park there.
Yeah, that's the downside, right, Peter, so you.
After Christmas.
Will they be at any point in the year, do you think?
December first.
Oh, December first.
So you'll give them a prorated rate or something?
And so when should they apply for one of those spots?
Uh, we haven't figured that out yet, probably in November.
So the park and ride right now, will that be able to accommodate, you think? I know, I know kids park over there anyways.
Spots in the park and ride, most days.
How many, you know, how well utilized that is.
Yeah, I see a lot of kids walking over.
I think it will be, I think it will be utilized much more when they can't use the parking lot at the high school.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's for a short time period.
When it's closed.
Yeah.
That lot, you could just see it with all the sports kids this week, parking in the regular lot, I mean, it really filled up fast.
Really? Yeah, well, it was nice to pull into the school today and see all the kids, the athletes, like coming out of practice and.
Getting on the bus.
Yeah, and smiling. So I think, I think they're ready to go back to school.
And, you know, I did notice they filled in on the hill, you know, spots, so that's now a little bit more full. At one point, it was just kind of, things were, there was a lot of mulch areas, the plantings.
A lot of flowers and stuff, yeah.
So I think that, that, that feels nice too, when you, when you come in, it's nice and bright.
And the roses sharrons looked really good.
Yes, the roses sharrons are beautiful. You actually didn't lose any of those from the initial planting.
Yeah, they.
And the lilies came in beautifully all summer.
Yeah, but they're hard to take care of, the roses sharrons.
That's why I said you didn't lose any of them.
We didn't go back, but they re-mulched that whole hill for the bus turnaround. That was wood chips last year, they put all new wood chips on it for the start of school. Which we also got donated from Peter Dirkie, he donated all the wood chips.
Wow.
Oh, wow.
From a tree company.
Wow, that's very nice, thank you to Peter and all of his, his crew and thank you to you and.
Thank you.
The people that work for you.
We had a pizza party for them, for the custodians today, so that was fun, that was fun. So they were the heroes of the district. Didn't get them Superman shirts, that's what I should have done, I thought of that after.
We never get a pizza party.
We can arrange that.
Do you do that every, every year?
We, we, we have done it the last few years.
Maybe I could.
Because they're, cause they're.
Last year you gave us a cake and we used it at the party.
Yeah, where did we get that cake?
I don't remember exactly why.
I don't know, but it wasn't for the.
But if I knew there was a party.
Well, we'll make sure we know that. Well, we'll make sure we know that.
Next year we'll call you.
We'll know that. We had some cookies.
Yeah.
They had some, they had some cookies.
That's nice.
Yes, it was really fun, they, it's, it's, they really appreciate it.
Yeah.
They really appreciate it when you take a minute to, to sit with them and talk about and tell them what a good job, you know. It, it was better, it's more than just the job, you know, it's like they had pride.
Sure.
They were very proud of, of the work they did and they should be.
Yes.
Cause it was yeoman's work in a short summer. And um, I actually say, I think the schools have looked better on the tour than I've ever seen them like.
Yeah, I think this year they've really done a great job.
I, I would have to agree with that, I really would, every year, I, I mean, yeah. Only good two years, two of the years, but, you know, I've had things, I, yeah, this is perfect, yes.
But Michael's never been in the, in the middle high school, other than to go to town meeting, so what did you think?
I thought it was great, I thought it looked really good.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, and, and seeing.
Uh, were you expecting it to look worse or what, like just?
I mean, I, I think it, it looked the way I'd expected it to, just because I kind of would hope that it would look that way.
Yeah.
Um, but I think just hearing from Peter, all the kind of the creative uses of spaces and, and figuring out how to get the most out of the space, I think was kind of the most, the thing that stuck with me is, it's not, well, we're a room short, so, too bad, it's, well, we have this and we need to figure it out and.
We have options, right Peter?
Put in closets.
There's an impressive amount of paper scattered around the school.
There is a lot of paper.
Probably a bit, man.
Yeah.
But you know, when, in two thousand and six, when NEAS came, that was one of the major issues they had with the building, is it wasn't clean, it wasn't well maintained, there wasn't a budget for it. Things were stored in places they probably shouldn't, but they were what they, so, you know, there's been over the years, you know, through, you know, Peter's advocacy and, and, you know, Mike and just everybody that's worked together, we have, we have really made huge strides.
Yeah.
You know, at the middle high school, and if we could get some money at some point to rip the rest of the carpets up, we've talked about repainting the lockers, you know, we have
Yeah, we talked about that.
things that we'd like to do, we're obviously wanna do a technology initiative, so, you know, those things that years ago, you know, didn't exist there and we were all like, wow, you know, we're behind, now we're not really saying that anymore, you know, we're, we're, we're getting where we, where we need to be.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Through a lot of creative redirection.
No, it did, it looked great.
Thank you.
That was awesome, thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
Thanks for joining us.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you for letting him go a little soon, so he could go home.
Yeah, nice, okay, um. Staffing update, we have that.
Yeah, you have the staff, you have staffing update, we're very close to being fully full.
We're full.
We're full, I thought we just had one para, we were just, you need to confirm, but um, so we just hired the um, special education coordinator at the middle high school, we're so excited, you know, the woman we, we have is actually doing the same job in another district, so I, I'm gonna be calling the superintendent tomorrow, cause I always feel like, you know, at this late date, and we'll work something out that's reasonable and fair, because that's a very important position, we know how it feels on the other side, so I'm not gonna let the other district not, you know, we're gonna work, we're gonna work.
At that time, right.
She probably needs to give a minimum of two weeks' notice there, and then, you know, if we have to share some days for a little bit, we, we'll work around it, cause it, it's not an easy position to fill, but we are very, we're very excited um, that uh, this woman came, came on our, on our radar screen and so that, so we're, we're, we're all set to go, we're gonna be good to go.
So we have then filled the compass para professional as well?
Yes, yes, all of, all of the para positions, except uh, one, we, we've offered it to somebody, we're just waiting to have that confirmation. Um, and yeah, so I, otherwise, we're, we're really, we're ready to go.
Great.
And we're very excited about the new teachers, we've had, Julie uh, organized two days of teacher orientation for new teachers this year. Um, and uh, that I think was very well received. Um, Amanda Gerard, the mentor coordinator, uh, who's very enthusiastic and she's a star. Um, you know, she, she worked with Julie and uh, you know, I think this year that, that, we were very impressed with the crop of new teachers, they're, they're very excited to be here. We have some that have a little more experience, others that are, you know, brand new, but um, you know, they'll all be assigned a mentor. And um, there, there's a, a, we're, we'll have a discussion with you about the mentor program, cause we have made some changes to it. Um, and I love Julie to be, Julie and Amanda to be able to come and talk about it with you, um, in terms of some exciting things we've been doing um, uh, for, for them throughout the year, you know, that, that really are making a difference. Feedback's been very positive from the, from the new teachers, so I'd like them to have a chance to chat with you about that, so that'll, that'll be upcoming.
That would be great.
Yeah, so I, you know, I don't have a lot more to say about the opening of school update, I wrote about it, what I know in my uh, my orange notes, the only thing I would, I would highlight two things. Um, one is that there's been a lot of anxiety about playground, the playground situation. Um, and rightly so, you know, I think when we discovered the arsenic in the soil, we thought we were dealing with a short-term situation. It, it didn't turn out to be a short-term situation, I think the school did a wonderful job last year making do with what was available. Um, and now we find ourselves short-term pain for long-term gain, the fields are gonna be beautiful and it's going to be wonderful, but because um, the fields are currently under construction by the end of September, those fields should be um, seeded, um, and they'll be just left to grow, they have to grow at least a year without anything happening on them, and then sometimes it's as much as a year and a half to two years, cause the last thing we wanna do is play grass and then run on it and, and, and it's dead.
Ruin it.
And ruin it, but it does mean that, you know, the access to the, to the playground space, right now, if you go over there, you'll notice that they're septic, they're digging the septic system for the, for the new school, um, and they will continue to, like I said, work on that for the, through the month of September. And then there is a big pile of, of dirt, that big pile of dirt, they're trying to knock it down some, but they're going to cover that. Um, that dirt will remain in the pile until the new school opens and this current school is taken down. That dirt will then be used to fill the space that will be created when the school is removed, so there will, so there may be some anxiety around that. Um, but it will be capped and covered. Um, and the um, the dirt that's obviously being spread is clean, so it's not the same problem it might have been, you know, last year when we were dealing with it. So, given the fact that, you know, the, the word about the soil is that it's naturally occurring, and I did explain to you in the orange notes that I did speak to a gentleman from the state, and I'm working on a date for him to come to the commu- to come into the community, and um, hopefully first be able to meet with the boards, decision-making boards, yourself and maybe the um, definitely the um, uh, board of selectmen and maybe, you know, Steve from Concom, whoever wants to come. And then have a community opportunity for, for um, parents or whoever might be wanting to hear more information, I wanted him to talk specifically about what does it mean if it's naturally occurring, because there may be some anxiety, and my recommendation is going to be that we extend the, the amount of places that the students can play next year at Pembroke, to include the grassy area where the bike rack was, has been, we moved the bike rack to the back by this chain link fence that the construction company has put up. We had a little um, shed, Mike, Mike and his guys moved the shed over by the, the chain link fence. And they're going to spread, spread stone dust in front of the wall of the gym, so there's a space there, there's the, the green space, the grassy space that, over by where the bike rack was. Right against the building, and then if you go around the corner, there's a grassy area outside of the classrooms in the gym. It is all grass, there is a couple, a couple of divot ruts that the trucks have made, but they have assured us that they are gonna bring their big material, their big trucks in and they're gonna put that, you know, straighten that out and put some stone dust down on it. Given the fact that it's naturally occurring, the gentleman from the state said to me that it's just like if they're playing out in their backyard. That he did not believe there was any risk, and of course, he wouldn't say positively no risk, but he said the risk, if your children are out there playing for fifteen to thirty minutes every day for, you know, a hundred and eighty days, is negligible, if, if any. Um, and so, you know, I'm recommending to you that we allow kids to play in that space for two reasons, one, naturally occurring. Two, we have a dust monitor, the dust monitor from the um, uh, from the project is going to be there, and his name is Matt, and he has assured me, I walked with him, he has assured me that he will pay particular attention, and remember, there won't be activity, after the beginning of the school year, there won't be any activity on those fields. It'll, it'll be clean and it'll be, and the, the part that's not clean will be covered, and it's gonna be, he'll monitor the dust every time the kids are out, are outside, he'll pay particular attention to that area. Um, so, that's gonna be my recommendation, I think that will help um, parents and kids, because it's, it, when you see it, it, it's got some green space, it's more, it's wider, you're not, you know, confining the kids to this little tiny area on the circle, we'd still use the circle. Um, and one of the things that Margaret's going to do, uh, between, she and Hope are gonna work with the kids, particularly the older kids, to determine here's the space, what would, what do you think you'd like to do in the various spaces? So in other words, we can engage the kids in a real world problem. This is what you have for space, what kinds of things would you like to do, can you do, they could research new games, there's a lot of things, Mike could paint ha- um, four-square um, uh, boards on the, on the, on the tar, we can make games on the tar, but it would give the school an opportunity to have um, more of an outlet. If parents felt very strongly they did not want that, then we'd make an option for them within the school, that's not a problem. But again, I think the fact that it's naturally occurring, and, and remember, the new, the new site where the school is, is all clean, Phil. Right, so that's, that's all clean, the fields around where they're gonna play are all clean with the exception of the mound, which is going to be covered. And other than that, the, it's grass we're talking about, is the addition, we're not adding spaces that are covered with dirt. It's grass, which is a barrier. So, that's, that's my recommendation, um, I'd love to hear your thoughts on that, um, uh, like I said, I, I think it, it makes sense and um, you know, I think it, it's gonna give us some more options.
Yeah, I, I definitely think it's, it's helping.
I mean, it won't, it won't solve it completely, cause obviously, you know, we wish we had the ability, I, I would have loved to figure out how we could move the structure over, but you can't move the structure, cause it's anchored. And then I thought, well, maybe we could see if we could get a couple of swings, and where could we put them, and the same problem is you gotta, you gotta do a lot, you gotta dig, you gotta put them down low enough, so that it's not dangerous when the, when the kids start swinging, so, you know, recess is really only fifteen minutes, you know. Um, I think what's important is that they just have a place where they can run around, they can play. Um, this just gives us, not only gives us grassy areas, but it gives us more space. Um, what we are gonna have to work around is that now we do need more supervision, which is fine, you know, in the budget, we will find the, the money to pay, like, let's just say another aide, you know, some, um, some extra, you know, time to cover, you know, cover the area, so we have adequate supervision. But it will allow us, I think, to, to divide the, what's going on out there in ways that I think might be more fun for the kids, there's more room for them to, to move.
Being able to see it made sense, cause you walked us around the building, Carol, and even though there's sort of pockets, it looked like there was enough space.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not perfect, but.
It's not perfect, right.
It looked like it was, you know, a pretty good resolution, short-term.
Well, it's see, and it is one year, next year, um, the playgrounds will be open and available, cause the kids are gonna move into the school. And then they'll, they'll take the school down and they'll put, put the fields there now, and the other fields by then might, might be able to be used.
Right.
Um, but really, you know, I think it's a, it's definitely a two-year, I think it's really a two-year deal, two, two, two to three years to um, have everything done, it'll be at least three years probably, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be great when it's done, and at least when the new school opens, they'll have the playground areas
Right.
to play, to play in, so this really is a one-year.
Right.
Short-term situation.
So in years past, they've had, they've given parents an opportunity to volunteer at, like lunch, you know, to come, you, you were saying that there might be a shortage.
We might, yeah, we'll, I think we, the problem is, we love to have people come and help, the problem is sometimes it's hard for them to commit to it, like.
Yeah, on a regular basis, yeah, you need to have that covered.
You know, um, but, you know, we, Margaret and I, we'd entertain, you know, um, something if it were, if it were uh, possible to do it in a way that was consistent.
You do need the commitment though, because when you look at where the kids would play, how it wraps around, you could never be watching everyone at the same time.
It's hard. Right. Right. Right.
And you want that.
Right, and you know, we've talked about um, giving the aides, you know, additional training in, um, you know, how to, how to facilitate, you know, some actual playing of games and, you know, um, because, you know, it, right now, it becomes crowd control, you know, and there, there, there isn't enough people out there. So our intention is to really look at the situation and see what we can do to make sure there's adequate supervision and supervision, so that maybe there could be some positive interaction between the adults and the kids, but the best thing is if some of the kids can have some input into it, then they're gonna be that much more invested. You know, maybe they can, you know, they can help in some way.
And how will that be, uh, how are you gonna ask that?
I'm not sure how Margaret's gonna do that, you know, you were thinking. Well, we can deal with it when she gets, comes up, okay, hold, hold that thought, Margaret, hold that thought.
No, I think that's a great idea.
So I wanted to just point out that I think the, the playground situation is something that um, you know, I, I, I'd like to, I'd like to try this. I don't think it's, I don't think we're, I, the guy that I talked to from the state is one of the head risk assessors, and he said, you know, I, I would not, I would not be concerned at all about that, you know, but again, no one's ever willing to say it's a hundred percent, you know. But remember, the arsenic exposure is a long-term risk, and I think we, we lose track of that sometimes, long-term risk, constant exposure. You know, kids are eating the dirt, you know, walking, you know, rolling in the dirt, you know, putting their hands in their mouth constantly. And, you know, our intention next year is to continue to have the night custodian that's gonna help, you know, control the dust, you know, make sure that the classrooms are appropriately dusted. Cause that made a huge difference last year, and the teachers and everybody noticed it, and actually the summer cleaning, from what Joan and Mike were saying, was actually, went more smoothly, because there wasn't as much, um, you know, stuff that you had to, you know, get a year's worth. Um, so, uh, you know, that's something that I.
Right, so that helps out in the long run.
I think it does.
As you're cleaning along the way.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll.
Well, I appreciate, you know, you're thinking of all the, you know, all the options, cause I know the parents.
I know, and I understand the concern, I do.
Yeah, they wanna get out there, even if it is only fifteen minutes, just to.
Right.
You know, have a little.
Right.
Time to relax.
Relax, and you know, there, that, one of those spaces is nice if, you know, it, it might be a little small for a kickball game, because I'm afraid the balls will go flying over into the construction site. But it, but it, but it, it might be, you know, good for, like, there's a lot of new games where kids play, you know, it'd be a good opportunity to, like, there's a lot of new games where kids play, you know, it'd be a good opportunity to, and they're ballgames too, but they're, you know, so, so I think it's a possibility that, that I think we can try to make something good happen out of a challenging situation.
I did want, and I, I didn't ask Mike while he was here, but he mentioned it when, when Mike and I were, um, touring with him, that, um, is there a way that we could get a tour again of the school, of the new school?
Oh, of the new school, sure, anytime. Um, I, I, we've been, we've been going over periodically and, uh, actually, the teachers had asked to go over and we really, really, really wanted to accommodate that.
Yeah.
But, the last time we went through, you know, they were, it really wasn't, it, first of all, it's an active construction site. To tour sixty people through at four or five hard hats at a time would be quite an undertaking. But, you know, you also want people, when they go in there, to say, oh, I can see this, I can see this. You know, they, there was just not enough for them to see where they'd go, oh, wow. You know, where we wanna have it, so that, you know, some of the, the ceilings are in, the lights are in, so they can actually visualize. It won't be, we won't wait till it's completely done. But, you know, later in the fall, when they really, you know, start putting some finishing touches on, I think they were more comfortable, they could, we, I went to the trailer meeting, um, this week and said that that's how we're gonna handle it and Chuck Adams said, oh, thank God, because, you know, this is what we recommend, that you wait until, you know, it's, it's in a, in a better shape. I mean, now, we were in there, people were painting and they had their masks on or choking, you know? It, it's just, it's not, it's not ready to have massive, massive groups of people tour through.
Well, let's see if the five of us can be accommodated.
We can definitely, um, talk to him about that. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll schedule something.
Okay.
All right, just make sure you don't wear sandals, you have to have.
Last time I did wear sandals.
Now, they won't, then they let you in? Cause they wouldn't let me in.
They weren't, they weren't working on the site.
Yeah, they weren't.
Oh, okay, okay, I see.
I missed that memo where it said, don't wear sandals.
Closed-toed shoes.
Closed-toed, so I wanted to, I didn't, wasn't on the agenda, because it wasn't known at the time that we built the agenda, but, um, you probably, I know I sent you some information on, uh, Boston Magazine recognized Georgetown High School as, uh, twenty-fifth on their list. Um, I think the last time we did it just with the high school, I think we're forty-seven. And this time, I think we're, at this time, we were under fifty, I know that. Well, last, no, see, that's the challenge with this magazine, is every year they don't, they don't use the same criteria. So last year, if you remember, they actually used elementary MCAS scores, so they did it more as a district last year. The year before, they did only the high school. This year, they're doing only the high school. So, I'm, it's hard to sort of follow the bouncing ball, but, you know, it, it was, it was great for us to be recognized. You know, the high school's a level-one school, um, which is the, the top, the top tier. You know, I, I showed, told you in the orange notes, even though I may be not supposed to tell you, that in language arts, you know, there are only three kids that weren't in the top two levels. You know, that is very, very impressive. So, kudos to Peter and, and his staff and, uh, and actually to everybody in the public schools, because, you know, by the time kids get to high school, it's accumulation of, of a lot of hard work and effort on the part of everybody. So, um, we, it's a, it's a great, it was a great honor for us, um, to be recognized. And, uh, I, I think we have a lot to be proud of. And then, and I always watch, you know, the other local districts, kind of where we fall, you know? And, uh, Andover was twenty-second, but at, we, we outs, we, our rating was higher than any, any other district in the area, which has not been the case in the past. You know, we, we often, you know, come close, but we're, we're sort of Manchester Essex and, um, uh, what is the other one? Uh, Manchester Essex, um, Hamilton, Wenham, you know, sometimes, you know, I tend to look at, um, you know, uh, some, uh, some of the other schools that, that I think, you know, we, we, we're like. And, uh, we, we were higher than all of them this year. Lynnfield.
And we certainly have the lowest per pupil spending of any in the top fifty.
That is always the case, whenever we've been on the, but again, I think, I think the most important thing is that we continue to spend the money on the areas that are going to make a difference. So when you pay attention to making sure your class sizes are reasonable, that, you know, your children have, your students have a comprehensive program, that they can have the courses that they need to be able to prepare them, not only for MCAS Park, but just, you know, a general, the general knowledge that they need. You know, those things make a difference.
Yeah.
We might not have the best up-to-date technology or, you know, all the maintenance equipment that we might want, which counts toward per pupil spending. But we just need to keep our eye on the prize, which is, you know, giving students the, students and teachers the conditions that they need in order to continue to impact student learning in a positive manner.
And I think it's also important when, when the, um, the spending came up for the, the, the middle high school repairs and all that stuff, recognizing that, how much is done? It's easy to say, oh, we're spending more money, but really this is saying, we're, we're spending the money wisely. It's not, we're not just throwing money out the door, we're, we're getting really good results.
Yes, absolutely.
For the relatively smaller amount of money that we're spending, I think is a, is a big message.
I think it's a huge message. So, top twenty-five, awesome work. Um, and then I did put in your packet and we, we don't, I don't think we wanna talk about it extensively today, but I, I gave you everything that we have seen. So, um, some of it you might look through and say, this doesn't make sense to, to, to us, to me. But we will, um, we will definitely have a time when we look at this as part of our district improvement planning with you. But, for the benefit of the, of the public, um, there are five levels. Uh, the high school was level-one, and the rest of the district was level-two, including the, the two schools. Um, if you look at the backup that goes down underneath it, you can see that in some cases, there was significant progress made, but they gave you a target, so we, we might've fallen just below the target, even though we made significant gains. So, our goal is to be a level-one school district. We think that's a very reasonable goal, attainable goal. Um, so, now our focus is to continue to sort of dig down and look at, you know, sort of who's still struggling. And then, we've been talking about RTI, so this'll fit nicely into our IT, RTI plan. We're really working at interventions for, um, those students that still, you know, have the farthest to go. So, um, anyway, I, I certainly can answer, Julia and I can answer any questions that you might have, but I really wanted to sort of give you the information, cause it's out and, um, it's available. And, um, I'd love to answer any questions that you might have. If not tonight, we could certainly put it on another agenda. We will continue to talk about it, cause the MCAS scores have come in, but we're still, you know, we're embargoed, embargoed and we're still looking at them. Um, but they all tie together, they all tie together.
So, do you have any idea when the MCAS scores will be released?
Wouldn't we be able to do us, at the end of the month?
Yeah, they usually come out around September nineteenth, eighteen, nineteen.
We got some preliminary information.
Yeah, the information we have right now is district information, so we're waiting for the state information and then they'll compare us across the state and that's when we get more detailed reports and things like that. So usually that's around September nineteenth.
Okay.
Yeah, and is that before parents get their information? It's not at the same time, is it? It's, or is it?
Uh, it's very close.
It's similar, yeah.
They'll send us the boxes a, a couple of days after the public, um, announcement, that we can, you know, unofficially talk about our scores.
We, we, we get it right out as soon as we get it, so.
Just a few days before.
Just a day or two after.
Just a day or two after.
They get that, yes.
Oh, okay.
Then we send the scores home.
So we, when we have the information, we'll put it on the committee, the committee agenda that's closest to, to, so we can get things out in a, in a current, in a, in a current timeframe. But, um, but we're, we, we look forward to them every year. Because we do, we do see progress and when, when you look at, it, they really do help us understand, you know, where kids are and, and what grades, we, you know, we might need to, to target a little bit more or something, you know? Fifth grade has been, you know, solid every, every year, so, you know, we wanna make sure, you know, we, so that means something's going well in the grades below, but maybe our third grade scores aren't exactly what we'd like. So that would allow us to, to work, you know, in one, two, three, you know, just to try to make sure we, we look at the curriculum. And of course, Julie, you saw last year, there's a number of curriculum changes this year. So, teachers are going to be getting, uh, new model units and, um, new curriculum that's aligned to the standards. So that'll help shore up where some of maybe our weaker areas might've been too. But it's, it's not an exact science, so it, it does take a, a good amount of, of looking at it and analyzing it and trying to pinpoint. I mean, the good news is, we're at the point where we get to pinpoint, we're not looking at things as major, major weaknesses. So, that, and when I first came here, and I'm not crediting myself, when, it's all of us, when I first came here, you know, I, we were looking at seventy-five percent of the kids in fourth and fifth grade, for some reason, where it needs improvement. That just didn't make sense to me and Georgetown is, and then I was, when I spent time here, I realized how hardworking the teachers were. Uh, uh, but there was a disconnect in curriculum, there, you know, there, there wasn't a, there were two, definitely two different schools doing great things, but two different things. So, we did full-day kindergarten, there's a number of things that, you know, we have put in place over, that, over time and now the curriculum's more coordinated, we have writers and readers workshop in every classroom. It, you know, so, the methods and means are more consistent. And now that we have the standards layered, layered in, that's gonna, that's gonna make a difference. And now we get the MCAS scores and other things where we can go in and look student by student, grade by grade, group by group, and then can have the, the privilege of being able to focus, um, on some things, so. But, if you think about it, there are students that were coming through the system that were struggling along the way and they got to the high school and some, and when it counted, they were where they needed to be. That's the way it's supposed to work. The MCAS is supposed to be given to you, so that you can do something with the results that's going to help change the course of student performance. And that's what, that's, when I look at high school results like that, I say, okay, something, something's working, because those interventions along the way, as I said, after ten years, the students exit, they're at proficient or advanced. Okay, and do you have any specific question, when you, did you look at it and if there's anything that came to your attention? It is a lot of information, I do realize that. I, I debated, do I just give you the, the highlight, high level? But then I know some people really do like to kind of look through it in a more detailed way. So, if you're a high-level person, that's fine, if you, if you're a digger into the details, you know, will help, and, to help you understand it.
I think it'll be interesting to use in conjunction with the MCAS information.
Oh, yeah, and the map and all of that.
Yeah, once the MCAS scores come out.
Okay, wonderful.
But thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, the AP scores?
Peter, did you wanna talk about them? And then you can just hear quickly from the principals and then really the rest of it moves pretty quickly.
Just pass these out.
Oh, you have more papers.
Well, I only have two slides, so I wasn't gonna do a.
No, that makes sense.
Pass these on. And, um, it's pretty self-explanatory. If we can look at the first Georgetown AP results, um, a little bit about the AP test. The AP test is, um, administered by, uh, us through the College Board. It's advanced placement and it is really, uh, much more than, in my opinion, uh, as a former AP teacher, much more than a, um, undergraduate college course. It is, it is more like a graduate course, it is very, very intense. It's scored on a scale of one to five, five being, um, the best that you can get. Um, I won't say perfect, because it, it isn't a perfect score, but it's a, it's an A and, uh, can look at it that way. It's considered, uh, passing with a three. And what passing means is that most schools will accept, um, a three as college credit for that particular course. It really depends, uh, where on the spectrum you are on a three, if the college is gonna do that and which schools do that, but most accept a three. So we consider, and most high schools consider, a three passing. So, a five is, is absolutely outstanding. And, um, if you, if you look at our scores in two thousand and fourteen, they've been pretty consistent over the last, last six or seven years. And if you look at our average, uh, district average, it's, um, four-point-one-six. You can, uh, get an idea about how good that is by looking at the, uh, the other sheet that comes from the College Board, that shows you where we are in Massachusetts and how we rank, uh, in the country and globally. And we are, um, absolutely outstanding. So, when we get great accolades like, uh, being ranked twenty-fifth in the state, it has to do with many factors, but one of them certainly is our AP scores. So, I would like to congratulate, um, all of the students for the great job that they did, the families that support them, and certainly our instructors, because there is an art to taking this test and to teaching it. And, um, it's just, uh, it's just fantastic and it's one of the things that makes Georgetown High School so great.
So Peter, when you say a five is, um, an A, so a three would be?
Can you really equate it to grades?
Not really. I, I just, five is the best you can get, but it, you don't have to get every single thing right, is, I guess, what I'm trying to say. Right. But, um, three is, is about the average of, of what, uh, you know, most kids get.
And that's, and that's a college-level class, that's the point. You know, so, it's not like ABC equation, you can't equate it necessarily to grades in high school. But you can say, if a child gets a three, then there's a strong likelihood that he or she can go to college and will be successful. That's how I've always interpreted what the College Board said. If it, if you're getting a four or you're getting a five.
You're ready.
You're, you're more than ready.
Yeah, and like I said, these, these are like graduate courses. So, um, the things, the things that they do, and I used to teach, um, AP US history and the things that we did in that course are things that I did in my graduate history courses. So, um, it is, it is very, very intense. And I, I guess one other thing I should say is, uh, the scores that I have put in front of you are the ones that we teach, but we've had, um, a num, a couple students, uh, maybe three, um, or four, that took courses on their own and did very, very well, got fours and fives. So we really had some exceptional students, uh, in last year's senior class that, that did that.
We were teasing Christopher Franco last year, because he didn't get, his average score wasn't a five.
Yeah.
And then, two thousand and fourteen, he got a five again.
Yeah, that's funny.
That's incredible. Everybody in his class got a five.
He, he teaches that class?
Yeah.
I wish I could take that class. I would love to take that class.
Come on in, you can audit it.
You heard him, when I heard him say it.
You gotta do the work.
Well, that's, how are you gonna learn? You don't do the work, you know, yeah. So, this US government policy?
Well, US government politics.
Politics.
Government politics, yeah.
Government politics. That must be fascinating. For a little school, we offer a good number of AP classes. There certainly are bigger schools that offer a lot more, um, but, you know, having something in every, one or two things in every major discipline.
Yeah.
You know, is.
And when, when I came here, we didn't have this many, so, uh, we've added over the years.
Peter, wasn't there an art, AP art at some point, or did we not actually add that? At one point, we were talking about doing that.
Yeah, we, we did, but we didn't have the enrollments.
Enrollments.
And, uh, we, we had someone several years back take it on their own.
Okay.
Yeah, and we supported that, you know, during the, the classroom. Like I said, um, when we were doing the tour, I, I had a student last year that, um, took a lot of classes, uh, uh, AP classes online during the school day and we, um, we found a little spot for him.
With the paper.
Where all the paper was, yeah, he had to deal with the paper. And, and his laptop was running out, we had to like dig a hole in the paper and find where the plug was, so he could plug it in.
And, and we also have the opportunity for kids to do dual enrollment. So, if they don't do AP at the school, they, and they, obviously they're going to school, they get to college, they can, they're doing college-level work.
Yeah, but actually I have a senior this year that's taking, uh, about fifty percent of their classes in college and fifty percent here. So, and that's what we wanna do.
Yeah.
Right.
That's amazing.
Yeah, give them the opportunity to.
That's right.
Learn what they wanna learn.
So in the orange notes, you mentioned you'd like to see the numbers increase.
Well, we talked, we've talked about that, we'd love to see.
We talked about the percentage. Um, I, I met with my department heads a couple days ago and we talked about that and trying to strategize and how to, uh, get more kids to, to challenge themselves and take it without lowering our standards. We wanna, we wanna keep the bar where it is, but we wanna try to find a way to get people, um, more interested and, and more willing to accept that challenge. And I equated it with the MCAS scores and how, you know, how we, uh, we moved and improved in MCAS and we got to a point where, well, we wanted to get kids in need to improve into proficient. And now what we focus on is almost everybody's in proficient, we wanna move, uh, some people from proficient to advanced. And that's how I look at, at this. So we have X amount of honest kids, how can we get more of those honest kids to take the jump into our AP program?
And some of it, I think, is the perception that kids have is of how hard it's going to be. So, maybe something the teachers could do is, is just, and, and maybe some of the kids that are taking the AP classes could help answer some of those questions, you know, for students. You don't have to take three, but you could take one.
I mean, obviously, it's going to be more difficult and challenging than, right, more time-consuming than a regular course, but I would think it'd be great preparation for college. I mean, you know, they, it really make their adjustments so much easier, they would've already.
Yeah, I do want, one of the things that I.
Understand how to organize themselves and how to set priorities and.
Yeah, I, I've asked Steve Umbro to reach out to the area schools and, uh, wanna start to collect some data in terms of percentage of kids that take AP. So how does our percentage match with, with other schools to see, um, to see where we're at with that?
And what's the average class size for AP class?
Off the top of my head, I would say around ten.
Okay.
There are some, uh, lower than that and some higher than that.
Yes, I don't, does this, does this help answer that, Peter? It says number of exams.
Yeah.
Cause, cause we expect everybody that takes the.
Yeah, we require everyone.
It is required, that would be my question.
Yeah.
So there's a, looks like there's a total of seventy-seven exams broken out. So like, for example, Calculus AB only had one student.
That was a, so we don't teach that.
Oh, that was the independent student?
Yeah, yeah.
I was gonna say, how do you get a stu, a teacher that teaches one, one child?
That's what it was.
We're not, we're not that rich.
But it's, the English lit is seventeen kids, but then you have ten and seven. But it's, the English lit is 17 kids, but then you have 10 and 7, Biology 7. Would that be accurate, 7, you think that's us?
Yes, we talk that.
Yeah, 7 is a low number.
Yeah, that's low.
That is.
It's usually not that low.
But you wouldn't wanna be in the position, though, to say to seven kids, well, we don't have enough. You know, if you're gonna do the AP, you know. So, it's always a dilemma, right? Because we only can spread, we have so many sections of all kinds of classes we need. We've been lucky to be able to have the.
We have to redirect some resources.
Peter is the master redirecter.
Yes, we talked about his creativity.
So, do you wanna have Peter just give you a quick update? If he's got anything he wants to point out, and then we'll have Margaret come up.
That's great, though.
Excellent, very exciting.
Well, I don't have to say too much about the building, because I think that's been covered tonight. I can tell you that we are ready to go. All the master schedules in both schools are complete and, for the most part, refined. We have hired everyone, right down to the wire. And it was news, Carol made a great announcement tonight. We, I was interviewing yesterday in that position, and we came to an agreement on the person. And unfortunately, I have not met her yet. And she was the only one that I didn't get to see because of.
Is this the coordinator?
Yeah, it was, obviously, this was unexpected, so we weren't able to, we had to, you know, get those interviews done as quick as we could. So, it was her interview, I believe, was when I was meeting with the sixth-grade parents.
Peter's been busy with a lot of orientations.
So, we had some good candidates, too. So, from what I see on paper, she looks outstanding, and I hope Carol can do some magic and get her here as soon as possible.
Yes.
So, we're 100% ready to go and staffed. And all of, we have the proper amount of desks in all the rooms. And we're still looking for 20 chairs for cafeteria, but I'm sure that Joan will find those resources somewhere. I think, you know, the athletic program is up and running, and everyone's working hard. And I think we have a good fix for our field situations right now. And again, some unanticipated costs there. We thought that we would, the project would move a little faster. We're ready to go. I notified the seniors about three weeks ago that they wouldn't be able to park. So, you know, it's not a great way to walk into the school in your senior year and hear that and start your year off that way. So, we wanted to give them a little advance notice. But we think we'll be ready to go by December 1st with that and.
Was that received okay, or did you have calls?
I never heard a thing.
Okay.
Yeah, so that means that everybody might be down the Cape or somewhere.
But I think that the kids, you know, can understand, you know, it is disappointing, I understand. But he wants the turf field, so they understand, they're just not happy, that's all.
You had a very good turnout for your middle school, sixth grade.
Yes, yeah, there was a very strong turnout there. And we're very excited to welcome them into our school. And, you know, very excited to welcome the last sixth-grade class into the school. And we're working on some professional development things. We're trying to schedule NELMs to come in and do an assessment and try to help us refocus our energies in social curriculum in the middle school and get back to those things. And the new MacBook Airs came in yesterday.
Oh, I didn't want everybody to know what you were talking about, Peter. You might be saying a little something about that.
So, we purchased, we leased a MacBook Air for every teacher, and that is a step.
Yeah, but they might not remember. Go ahead, keep going.
So, that is step one. Well, there's two reasons for that. One, because the computers that they have right now are just. I can't say they're on their last leg, they're on no legs. They're on their last toe. So, we also are very committed to moving to a one-to-one initiative. And step one of that is to get that technology in the hands of the teachers. So, Wes and I talked about it a lot, and we decided that we would shift from our Windows operating system to the Mac OS for two reasons, really. Two apps that aren't available on the Windows end. That would be iBook Author, and that is, and an app that allows you to make an electronic book. And we think that, you know, teachers really use the textbook as a resource and a base, but have so many other resources they use. And this is a great way to, you know, pull them all together electronically. And then iTunes University, which is a great resource for kids and for teachers. And actually, teachers can create their own courses with that. So, we were planning on getting them all an iPad Mini to go along with that, but we had another need in one of our computer labs, which is on no toes. So, we had to take some of that lease money and purchase a new lab, one of our business labs. And that should be coming in shortly. But we have another lease coming to an end at the end of the year, so we hope to get the iPad Minis at that time. So, we're very excited about that. It's gonna be a little bit bumpy as we try to transition. It is a little different, but, I mean, we're moving very rapidly to a place in technology where the operating systems are very similar and it doesn't really matter that much anymore. But there is some things with the books. I know Wes is working really hard to figure out how to get these things to work on our network the way that we want them to. And I'm sure that that will solve that in no time, so.
Well, that's good, because personally, I think going from like a Mac to, or even an iPhone to a Droid, to me, if you're not used to it, the learning curve, I think, can be significant.
Yeah.
So, I'm just wondering, like, the teachers that have different systems that they're used to.
Part of the plan is make sure that there's professional development, those are not comfortable with Macs. And I spearheading that to make sure that they don't get them in their hands until they're comfortable with how they work and what they can do with them. We're able to get copies of Microsoft Office on them, so they're used to the Office products. Both Chrome and Firefox browsers are gonna be, so you can use those two browsers. We're just making as easy a transmission as possible. For the most part, when you're doing something like this, a big project, that you have to get teachers trained that are uncomfortable, and we're gonna work towards that. And we've identified ways of doing that, so they can be comfortable with when they get their product. And I don't want them to get it and be frustrated with it, that's just not gonna do anybody any good. And these are high-quality laptops. I kill us with our operating system on them. When I researched after Peter told me what he was going to do, they were the best laptop, the best quality for the best price. Operating system mattered not. And they are that good. So, that's why we, I put behind them on gainos in. And we'll get the teachers up to comfortability level as fast as we possibly can.
And we have a number of teachers that use Macs anyway, so they have all volunteered. Yeah, they've all volunteered to help out, so.
And they last a long time. I mean, I have, I bought a MacBook Air for myself, and before I know it, you know, that's the kid's preferred computer. So, if I don't find it around the house, it's because one of the kids has taken it, that's their favorite.
So, now that the teachers are good with computers, how close are we to allowing the students to bring in their own home devices? You know, all these, a lot of schools are requiring that.
Well, we, let me say this. I've been putting that out in the parent survey I do every year in both schools. And for the last four or five years, parents are, understand the importance and support it and would love to do it. This year was the first year that the majority, now granted, I don't have 100% participation in this. So, it's probably around 40%, which is pretty good for a parent survey. And it was like 85, 90% of the parents indicated they were willing to pay for a device. So, we're already at the spot where you can use your phones for educational purposes in a classroom, if that's what the teacher wants. So, we're kinda taking some baby steps. And now, we have to figure out, you know, what platform and what device we wanna use.
It's not just much platform and device, it's also we have to make sure the wireless is available in every room at a high enough level, so that the whole classroom, whatever device it is, they can handle.
You gotta make sure.
At that point now, we have to get to that point. And then BYODI, I've supported for years, and students are really good about it because it's their equipment, and they're really careful with it, when it's a school equipment. And some students don't pay as much attention as they should. So, we'll address those issues, but BYOD is a good way to go. And it gives students something that they use, they bring it home, it's theirs, and they can take care of it, because their parents will not be too happy if they break it. So, in that respect, it's good. But mainly, we're addressing the infrastructure first. You really have to have good wireless in order to have a full one-to-one commitment. And I'm not sure we're quite there yet.
Yeah, but we are addressing some of our backbone issues with the building project.
Okay, good.
Does that mean those backbone issues might not be fully worked on until next year, next summer? Or, I mean, would we be able to improve the quality of our wireless capability this year?
I've already put some bad leads on it. Gonna replace some of the old backbone that's just so bad that it shouldn't even be there anymore. And I've got some switches to replace that stuff. And then Kyle and I will go through and see what the best situation is for where we should put our AP, you know, wireless access points, so we get the most out of each one of those. And I think that's, we're gonna be doing that over the fall and getting it all squared away. So, yeah, we'll have some ability. I'm just not confident saying, let's go for the one-to-one until after next summer, when we have all the backbone fixed up, and we have wireless throughout the building 100%.
But if Barbie's son wanted to bring his laptop to school, to have him, you know, to do his work on, is that?
I would support it, yeah.
Okay, so that's not, yeah, so that, right now, it's just not a formal thing, but if students want it.
Yeah.
Have, what do they have, 400 students in that school? 400 high school students bringing in their equipment all at once? I don't think we're there yet.
Is that the ultimate goal, though? That all 400 could be theoretically using?
Most certainly, we're almost there. I mean, we're talking about a little step like that, that big. It's just we don't have APs to cover the building adequately, because there's so much solid walls.
Right.
And it's hard to get some of the radios to go through that. So, we'll have to add more APs before we'll build, say, office. Not long, that isn't.
Yeah.
No, not really, you've got a really nice connection there, it's fiber, better fiber, so.
Yeah, and we still have some hubs and.
We're getting out of there, that's why.
Yeah.
I guess some inexpensive switches to get us through the rest of the year.
Is there a supervision issue? I know you were talking about, at one point, turning the computers into U-shape for making sure that everyone's doing the right thing in whatever the class is. When the kids are, when the students are looking on their cellphones or their iPads or whatever, what's, I assume that things are gonna be filtered appropriately and all that.
Everything is filtered, and we can see, anytime somebody joins our wireless network, then we can see them and where they go.
So, they're logging, so they're unique users? Okay.
Yeah. We can do that now.
And you'll have certain firewall's with certain things.
We already have that.
Yeah.
So, we're ready to go. First day of school, everybody, picture day.
We're ready for you to have them.
Yeah, I know, I bet. It was a short summer, but just, so everybody knows that it's, we do, at the middle high school, we do pictures on the first day, and they should already have all the stuff from the photographer. And we like to get that ready, you know, right out of the way.
Yeah, good.
We're ready.
Okay, thank you, Peter.
That's awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Are you chilly in here tonight?
I brought my blanket, as you noticed. But she's not really cold, because she has her gloves on. She has her gloves on, that's it.
Wait till September. So, it has been a busy summer, and much of what I prepared to read, I may not need to. You had in your packet all the new hires. And as Peter has done right to the last minute, I've done one today, and so, almost done. We do have one more position to fill, but don't we have two more days? I'm optimistic. And it has been busy, and when I look back, it's like so many things. What did I do all summer? But it's just been crazy, you know, back and forth, but wonderful. It's been busy, but just great being in both buildings. And again, I do wanna, in a minute, I'll read my thanks to everybody and make sure I don't leave anyone out. But just the physical work at Penbrook that was needing to be done was great. I've had a chance throughout the summer to meet with teachers, with, you know, reading specialists. We've really started that transition work, so that both secretaries, Camille Early and Diane Collins have met a couple times, so that we start really coordinating forms that go home to parents, things that go out to teachers. Maureen O'Connor and Kate Donlin, who are both reading specialists in both schools, they've met over the summer, again, so that we're really aligning, you know, curriculum, units of study, assessments, and really making sure that we have, you know, a solid vertical transition. And hiring was huge. I had lots of help from teachers, you know, to do the hiring for the grade-level teachers. And looking at the student assistance team that, you know, that every school has. So, again, you know, just aligning that, so that it's one solid process in Penbrook and Pearly. Looking at discipline and, you know, behavior and how forms the children fill out. You know, so just making sure that that's aligned school to school. So, a lot of it has just been that infrastructure, getting things ready, so that when children come in, it looks seamless to them. You know, they won't notice anything, they'll be happy. And I just, I'm so happy to be at both schools this year and to see the children that I know. So, and that's been.
That's right, because you know all the kids that's here.
I know all of them, the fifth graders were the children that I had first when I started, so.
That makes it easier for the kids and for the parents.
Well, and we talked about, on the first day at Penbrook, the, what traditionally has happened is the second graders meet in the gym, and so they come right away into the gym. And Barry Belanger is there, who is a familiar face to them. So, one thing we were talking about this year, as you probably saw in your packet, Karen Young, who was at Pearly for many years, next year she'll be at Penbrook. So, she will be a familiar face. So, you know, I'll ask her to be in the gym.
Reader.
And then, and I know the children, so that will be nice and a familiar face for them. So, I think, and parents are telling me that children are excited, and so I'm looking forward to that.
Great, that's good.
But again, just the summer camp, I thought it was three camps at Pearly this year. And Chris Aboner, Jennifer Mills, Heidi Biegen, Jerry Spector Brady, Elizabeth Carroll, and Mike Walsh were all teachers that taught in one of the three throughout the summer. And also, working from Pearly and Penbrook were Sue McCarter, Sarah Murphy, Christie Palmasano, Kim Reel, and Sarah Gata. So, it was extremely busy, but they, just everybody worked out. Nobody was in their way. I mean, it was just activity, but it was seamless.
And those teachers worked all summer, literally, they had a week off. I mean, because it was, we get out so late, the camp started pretty much right away.
Right, the second week.
And then, they worked all summer, and then literally it ended.
And one just ended last week.
Last week, yeah. So, they, one or two weeks. So, you know, that's dedication. I mean, they got paid for it, that's true, but it's still dedication to continue doing what you do all year long throughout the summer with some of the children who have the greatest challenges. You know, it's just, it's a love they have, you know, definitely.
That's great. And then, as always, Mike Anderson, he does a fantastic job. I wrote not, every email, every phone call, no matter where I get them, he always responds and always responds with what I need. At Pearly, Eric Stevenson and Chuck Kennedy did a great job, and, you know, the school does shine. And especially towards the end, because, again, the challenge with having the camps is then how do you clean? So, just throughout the summer, everyone did a great job letting me know when rooms were finished, so that teachers could actually go in, and they moved things back into their rooms, so that when the next set of classrooms had to be emptied, it was all just a seamless process. And then, pre-K teachers who really only had one week to get into their rooms, but because they moved so quickly. And then, Warren Young and Bob and Jacob came over from Penbrook to help out at Pearly, so that, you know, this last couple weeks was just a full-court press. And again, as. Um and again, at Penbrook, um Warren Young, Bob Wyman and Jacob Hamlin, um they are the same, you know, I say, oh, wouldn't it be great to put up a wall? I walk in the next day, there's a wall. So they were just responsive and have done a phenomenal job. Um and Brett Moyer and Jack Howland outside, again, they're kind of the outdoor, you know, um in the courtyards and just mowing and cleaning and hoeing and raking. They've done a great job. And every year I always thank Barry because he's just phenomenal and now Wes, I can thank you too. Whatever we need, you know, it's just an email away. And as I had said, Camille and Diane, they um this was Diane Collins' first summer to work. And um she's probably wondering how it ever happened that she didn't have to work because it's just so much to do over the summer. Um but they had did a great job working together. I mentioned Morgan and Kate. Um and then um Julie DeRoche and Donna Straight facilitated professional development, so some teachers participated in that. Um and then again, along with the summer camp. Um and I did meet again throughout the summer with Al Beardsley, Mike Anderson and Carol, just walking around looking at how it is going to be at Penbrook. Um parking is going to be a challenge, so we have Pearly parking and Penbrook. So I am just publicly asking parents to just allow some extra time the first couple of weeks at school at both places because as we know, um parents new to Pearly need to adjust to that, you know, pulling in, not parking and getting out. You know, don't don't come in and park, you just have to do the drive-through, kiss and drop off and and go. So and then at Penbrook, again, we're um we're going to paint lines so to help parents know where to drive. But we're we're just, you know, it's just going to be um allow time to get in and out. And it will be okay, but we just have to be patient with that. And then the buses, we're talking about those buses are always a challenge. Um then I won't go through the list of hires because you you have that whole list. Let's see, um just numbers, we have um and again, it is fluid. Every other day I'm getting an email, we have new student or somebody's moved or come in. But today we have eighty-five preschool children, eighty-four kindergarten, and that includes we opened up ten school choice slots in kindergarten, um and we filled eight the last I knew.
So what's the total in kindergarten?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four, with the with the eight.
With eight. And a hundred and eighteen, grade one. Now that's the bigger class. So at Pearly, there are around two hundred and eighty-seven children. Then um in grade two, there are ninety-four, ninety-seven in grade three, a hundred and seven in grade four and a hundred and ten in grade five. So at Pearly, there are around four hundred and eight. And so between Pearly and Penbrook, there are around six hundred and ninety-five children.
You ready for that?
I'm ready.
There'll be seven hundred and twenty in the new school.
Ready. We're gonna do it. I've gotten good at, um you see the line of traffic um when you come out of Pearly, so you go the back way to avoid waiting a long time. And then I've realized that when you leave Penbrook, sometimes it's better to go the back way around because the traffic on North Street, uh not um East Main Street. Gets back.
Oh, we can show you all the
Why is she turning down that way? Why isn't she going straight to the light? And then I realized that she's trying to avoid the traffic.
Avoid the traffic.
Right, because you will be like, you know, in a time panic at times, I'm sure to get back.
Right.
Well, it used to be when you're in one building, it's, you know, I'll be down the hall and now it's I'll be at the other school and now I'll be back like in ten minutes, so.
Right.
Yeah, traffic downtown can be tough at different times of the day.
Yeah. Um and then um as Carol mentioned, and as I I think I've mentioned before also that one of my goals is to write a survey for children to find out what are the um celebrations and the traditions that they'd like to continue, you know, what are valuable to them, you know, even, you know, for this year, what are the things they're looking forward to? And I thought that within that survey, I could also embed the questions about what would you like to, you know, have for activities outside? What kinds of equipment do you like to play with outside that we can provide? So just kind of roll it into one survey, um you know, the first couple of weeks that classroom teachers can do right in their in their room and then, you know, give to me.
I'm gonna ask this question.
Go ahead.
What are you doing about celebrations?
What do you mean?
Uh, you know, like
Birthdays?
Birthdays and, you know, things like that, like or or, you know, celebrations. Well, I don't wanna a whole, you know, I I'm sure you have a lot of um preparation for all those different things. But in terms of just like, yeah, birthdays really and
Well, I'm not
It's opening a can of worms, but I'm
Oh, no, she's not changing a million things.
I am not, I am moving slowly on things like that.
Okay.
And because and I am going to, you know, watch how it is. But you you know, um but children and parents, they leave Pearly. And we don't have food celebrations for birthdays and no one minds that. You know, a- again, they they come into a system and here's the way it is and, you know, everyone just doesn't. So then at Pearly, they they can have food um as part of a celebration for birthday. At at Penbrook.
Right.
So for the following year, I'm thinking, and I always say, I say it all the time, I'm a middle child, so I'm always middle of the road in most things. I'm not dogmatic. I don't live at any extreme. So I see this as a case of, you know, how can we do it so that we still allow that celebration and have food, but not we're not going overboard and we're not also going against a new, you know, wellness policy and new law so that we kind of keep it within a realm of reasonable. And I've got a couple ideas and I think I've mentioned before, um as Heather builds up the you know, the the kitchen program, that maybe she comes up with a list of items, like a a menu, a catering form and parents can order off that so that we know the foods are safe. Um and but they're so they're still good, you know, yummy food, but we know they're safe. You know, so just a couple of things that
Interesting idea.
Yeah.
Do that in some schools. We had a we had a copy of one of the menus from a school.
So if you want cupcakes, you can order them from the school.
It's almost like a catering service, we're gonna now gain rev- revenue from
Yeah, right, because, I mean, if parents are, you know, you're buying cupcakes. But here's one way we can assure they're going to be, you know, safe for for kids because there's so many things, you know, there are allergies we have to be careful about. And, you know, we don't really know. Again, you know, we it's not
Might just have to provide some variety so every kid doesn't have the same. So it's not always the same.
Again, these are ideas, we're not
Right, it's just an idea.
Exploring ideas, right.
We're not saying that parents, just so the parents watching, we're not saying they can't make cupcakes for their child's birthday.
Nothing, however they've done it this year is how they'll do it, so.
Okay, but we're just looking, we're just looking at all of And you know, we're 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 opening a new school, so you know, there's new traditions maybe, you know, some will be kept, some might change, you know.
And and again, when I'm looking at young children at Pearly, pre-K, K and one, some of that really stringent policy on um on nuts and and peanuts and that sort of thing. It's because when you're three, you really don't have the ability to make your own choice, you know, you we we teach children, but we have to protect them in a way that, you know, we we have to do. But as children get older, of course, then you start teaching them, you 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 can't assume it's safe just because we don't, we have a nut-free policy. So when we're looking at a school where we have, you know, K through grade six, there are things that we're going to wanna do in a kindergarten wing that maybe we're not going to do, you know, in the upper grades. So that's why we we wanna have some consistency, but also understand that we have to do things a little different depending on the age of the kids. So. But I'm excited.
Yeah, great.
Excited.
Yeah, you've seen it.
So we
You always do.
It's great. I say, the only the only reason I'm not sad for summer ending is because I love my job, so here it is.
We love having the kids.
We love it.
It's been great to see them.
You know. Yeah, it is odd, it is odd, walking in and not having like the
It's very different.
The kids.
It's very different.
Going through the hallways and stuff. They'll be there soon.
We're happy to have the staff back. It's great to see the teachers coming in, catching up with what they're doing. Some people got married. You know, some people have babies, they brought their babies in, so it's, you know, it's all good.
Yeah.
It's all good.
Good. I can't wait to hear how the first couple of weeks go at our next meeting.
It'll be fun.
I can't wait to tell you. I'm sure the 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 pickup and drop off will be, that's always seems to be just an issue.
It's just a change.
Yeah. And it is at both schools and I, you know, again, it's one year, we just have
Right, and if you That's all part of the long-term planning, you know, like when when Pearly is just preschool in central office. You know, it could alleviate some of the parking issues at the high school because now you'd have additional spaces available. The new school is gonna take care of the parking issue because there's gonna be ninety-eight parking spaces or something over there and a long queuing opportunity, so that shouldn't, you shouldn't be having the the issues around parking there. And so I I think in the long run, you know, those things that have been plaguing us for years and years are going to be taking care of themselves as we have this ability to do this um realignment.
Now, are the bus numbers consistent as in with previous years?
Well, I that's a great, um I'm glad you mentioned that. I don't know as much as, I don't know if parents need to know as much as just internally. Um Barry has um aligned the bus numbers with a high school. It used to be that the high school had a bus number and then it was different than for the early in Penbrook. Now he's aligned them both, so whatever
You were, you still will be.
So those re- those routes were published.
Right.
Right, yeah.
But the bus numbers themselves.
Yeah, so she's saying if it's, let's just take um, you know, out by Pam, out by Pam. So the kids at high school, middle high school that live out near her are bus seven, the elementary kids are bus seven.
That will help because before it was different.
Exactly.
We were like seven for high school and three for elementary.
So there was always that confusion, is this the right bus? And so now they will be consistent, so.
That's good, that's very good.
That's good, and people that can take the bus, that always helps too if they do send the kids
Right.
On the bus with the pickup and drop off.
Right.
So, yeah.
Good. Thank you, Margaret.
Good luck.
Thank you. Margaret's up for the challenge.
I am.
I can see.
Okay, uh financial report, can you talk about?
Yep, and so the first thing you have is a actually a reimbursement to me for
I saw that.
Filing the order of conditions from the Conservation Commission as as County Registry of Deeds. So uh Lindsay, the architect, said it had to be done right away. There's a certain number of days, so I went over that day with it. And it was told they take cash or check, okay? So that's what I did, I wrote out a check. So that's a reimbursement for that, you're welcome. So I need um, you need to vote on it.
Mm-hmm.
And um and then I need three signatures on it, just as on a regular warrant.
Okay, can we do the, I'll do the approval now.
And that and that's the original, I think, if you wanna sign it.
Okay, so the chair will entertain a motion to approve um a
Reimbursement.
Reimbursement to Joan Laporta with an amount of one hundred and fifty dollars.
All right, filing fees for the registry deed.
Fees for the high school turf field dated June twenty-fourth, twenty fourteen, as presented.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you for doing that, Joan.
You're welcome. Um the second piece I have that's on the agenda um is the long-awaited contract for the architect for the Pearly renovation, uh the, what's it called, P- Pearly School Restoration Project. So it took a long time to develop the specs and um we had, I think, five, uh six responses. We went through as a committee and rated them on the criteria that was listed in the RFP and selected CBI Consulting. They originally came back with a quote that was close to forty thousand dollars and um they were able to rework their numbers because it was seemed too high for the money of the project, of what we had left for the project. So they were able to make some changes, so um this contract's in the amount of thirty thousand, seven hundred and fifty. I spoke to um Michael Teller, who's the president of the company, to ask, okay, so now what happens? Because we can't do the project now until next uh late spring, early summer, as, you know, as soon as the students are out. He said it wasn't a problem. They begin working on it now and write all the specs to go out to bid. Go out to bid sometime in late winter and then award the contracts and and the they'll make sure that the um contractor knows they can't stop the school, you know, gets out. And it'll probably be crazy here because at Pearly, because we're gonna try to be moving people and have a roof project, but at least it will, it will get done. And and I don't think it's that much work that it will take that long a period of time, so. Um so I need your, the the committee's approval and then Barbie to sign the original.
Okay, show me.
I think it's on the back page, the uh signature.
I see the signature. What is it? Is the amount in here?
On on my memo, it's right in the front on the memo. I don't know where it is in here. It might take us a little while to find it. No, it's on page uh seven, yeah, seven one, so it's article seven, not page seven, but article seven one. And this was, this was the contract that Mike Farrell got from our attorneys. They reviewed it. They reviewed it with the um CBI's attorney, so it's all cleared.
Okay, so the chair will entertain a motion to uh approve the agreement between the Georgetown Public Schools and CBI Consulting, Inc.
Yep.
In the amount of thirty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for the for um roof work at the
It's the design services.
Okay, design services for the um Pearly Elementary School Roof Replacement Project as presented.
So moved. Second.
Would you have a problem, Barbie, if we just changed the word um to Restoration Project?
Sure.
Because because it's a historic building, they have specific terms that
Oh, okay. That was what the the way the Warren article was passed, Restoration Project.
So instead of Pearly Elementary School Roof Replacement Project?
Right, it's
Okay, change it to Pearly Elementary School Roof Restoration Project?
Perfect.
Okay. Okay, so I got a a first and a sec- I got a, you seconded, right?
I did.
Okay, so discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so I have two new things.
Okay.
Um and the reason I'm bringing them forth is it takes a long time for these Warren article bills to be paid because they're, we're not allowed to pay them out of our office.
No.
So they have to go through the town warrant process. Um I did receive bills this week from Gail and um BSC Group. BSC Group was the peer review for the conservation. And then the Gail invoice uh is a lot, and I didn't wanna sit on it for a month, it's uh thirteen thousand dollars. So um that includes, that thirteen thousand includes the the eleven thousand you had approved
The phase two.
Yeah, phase two.
Oh, okay, so it's
So I made copies for everybody.
The phase two paper that just disappeared, I know.
I don't know if everybody wants a copy, but you can have a copy and that top one is for the is the original one for signature.
Okay, we have to vote on that?
These are copies, yeah.
Because these are CPC monies, I have to have a vote taken.
Do we vote on the total amount or just the portion that isn't phase two?
No, you can say you app- you uh make a motion to approve a warrant for the turf field in the amount of thirteen, just like you do when you do the approval of the warrants.
The total amount.
Do the total at the bottom.
Sign each one of these?
Nope, nope, these are copies, she said.
I gave the original. It's a, just for your records if you wanted to see what we got bills for.
Okay. Okay, um so the chair will entertain a motion to approve um the warrant for the high school turf field project in the amount of thirteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty-six cents as presented. Should I mention Gail Associates and BSC Group?
Sure.
Okay.
So moved.
Any discussion?
Thank you.
Um all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It wouldn't be a meeting without approving a Gail invoice.
Pretty soon.
Pretty soon we won't be.
Having any. Um so then I did a memo. The last thing is um I'm requesting to surplus thirty-five old desks from the um the Penbrook School that we are, they are the worst desk in the school and there's no need for them anymore. They've outlived their useful life by a long shot. And um as we find things, as we go through the year, you, I'm probably gonna be coming to you with more surplus things. Um it, we might as well just get rid of them as we, as we find them. They did a Margaret, she's not here, but Margaret's very organized. Every room, and and you guys saw it tonight, every room is very organized. There were lots of desks all over the place, so they went through, they removed all There were lots of desks all over the place, so they went through, they removed all the desks. And we saved twenty-five and we've had them stored in case we have extra kids or we need extra desks, but these shouldn't be stored.
Don't you want to make them available to the public? They might, they might, you know, it's like, oh, yeah, when they tear buildings down, they give people the bricks, you know? These are the original dis, desks that went with the school.
Mike might want them, Mike Anderson.
I don't think so.
Mike's the one that wants to get rid of them.
Mike wants to get rid of them. I was kidding her, because, you know, people get nostalgic about that stuff, you know?
Yeah. Okay.
Depends on the nature of the desk, but these sound like the worst desks in the school.
And we have to vote on that, correct?
Yes, you have to vote on these.
Okay, so the chair will entertain a motion to, uh, approve the request from Joan Laporta to surplus thirty-five student desks at the Penbrook School as presented.
So moved. Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have.
That was enough.
Sure, Joan?
Okay, um, has there been any subcommittee meetings? Um, building, there was a building committee meeting, I know that Michael went in place of Pam, but it turned out that it wasn't like a, there was no forum, so it was just an informational meeting. Okay, is there anything on that meeting that we need to know about?
There were, now I'm thinking back to my notes, there were, there were small
Yeah, has there been another meeting since?
Yes.
Yeah, there was one after that, yeah.
There was one on August nineteenth, and that went very well, there was a quorum. Um, so the first meeting was for Penbrook, uh, and just the school is still ahead of schedule in most areas. The electric lines are going in, uh, there was a note that Georgetown Lighting is wonderful to work with, which didn't surprise anyone. Um, they're bringing in new fill, the exterior is almost done. Um, let's see. Nothing else significant. Uh, the, that I
No, I agree.
Okay, Georgetown Middle High School meeting, um, they will be doing on August twentieth today, the cleaning and videoing of drain lines. Underneath floors. It was, it sounded interesting at the time. This'll determine the extent of corrective water piping, just to make sure that all of our, by the end of this project, that all of our pipes will be, um, in, in good shape. Okay, this, just to, right, okay. Um, Green Seal has determined that we do, we will need to abate the asbestos in the floors only. Air quality tests will occur throughout the construction project. The construction will start in April with roofers and work on the gym, which we knew that before. Um, and the fall town meeting will include a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar warrant to replace the rooftop heat pumps. That's why I wanted to know, right, the heat pumps. Um, apparently they've just, they've come to the point where they've completely out
No, they, they have to, they, well, that, the plan was always to do something in the fall. Although, some of the finance committee people thought it really was for the spring town meeting. But we, we said at the time that whenever the project was due to do the roof, we had to do the heat pumps before, because otherwise you're poking holes in your brand-new roof. So, um, in order, in order for that to be done in, in the sequence
To start the roof in April.
Right, we need them, well, I think we're starting the roof in the summer, but I think they felt that we needed the money in the fall because there were things that were gonna need to be done.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah.
So the fall town meeting, so Mike had said that a warrant request was done.
Well, we're going to make a warrant.
Yeah, we talked about it at the finance committee last year and it, it got passed over in the
Yeah, I was just surprised when I'm like, oh, wait, we'll make the fall meeting?
That was kind of, you know, they were, they were moving the shelves.
Yeah, yeah.
And there were certain things that they really wanted to get done, but they, they, I, I felt like they made a commitment that the money was going to be available. It was just a question of, you know, whether it was gonna be fall or spring. And I think, given the information about what the building project timeline is, that will determine whether it's fall or spring.
Is there a risk of there not being a town meeting? Cause I know there's, like
Sometimes there is.
Date, is there a date?
They haven't done a date yet.
That's what, yeah, I looked for the date, I couldn't find it.
But there, there, there always is that risk, um, but usually there's snow and ice deficits that they have to take care of, so again, I don't know if that's necessary this year.
Oh, he had, he had a deficit, yeah, so they probably have to do that.
Oh, yeah, there just definitely was.
Yeah, so they have to do that before
There was a lot of snow this year, yeah.
They have to do that before December.
Yeah, that makes sense.
But wouldn't there always be a town meeting if there was a warrant that needed to be approved?
If it was a required warrant, the question's gonna be, somebody might ask, well, if you're gonna do the roof in the, if you're gonna do the roof in the summer, then why wouldn't you, you know, get the approval uh, in the, in the spring? Again, I, I think it has to do with the specifications and all that stuff has some lead time, um, but I could certainly get more information for you.
I don't know, I have, the roofers are gonna start in April.
Well, maybe, maybe they did Well, no, you might not be wrong about it. Um, you know, I know there's, there, I know what they were talking about doing definitely was the gym area. But it very well could be that they're gonna start on the roof, it really could be. Um, what we should do is, you know, one of the fir, meetings in September perhaps? Cause you're gonna have to recommend it to the, um, to the Board of Selectmen that you wanna, we wanna have a Warren article. Um, so we'll have to do it in September or early October, depending on what date they give. We can have, um, some buil, uh, put the building committee come and give more information to the committee at the time, so you know exactly what the phase is gonna look like. Okay. Um, and then they just discussed the new phone system that's gonna be part of this project with new switches, and they are working with Wes Vaughn and, um, they're finding him very helpful.
He certainly is.
Great.
He's really good.
That's it?
Thank you.
September, October.
And the next meeting, I see, September sixteenth for the school building?
The next school building committee meeting is September sixteenth, yes.
Thank you. No other subcommittee?
We have
Public relations?
Oh, you did?
Yes.
We have two even?
Yes, we did.
Yeah.
We did.
Wow, how, okay, how'd that come?
That went very well, didn't it? Um, yeah, let's see, you know, Facebook is moving forward. And, uh, Michael has offered to take up the, the Twitter feed.
Oh.
The district Twitter feed, we, I mean, we're just discussing that.
Ryan was, Barry will do
I don't know.
Christopher Franco is
Admit you unless you're
Yeah, no.
You might want to learn.
Mike has said he might be willing to help us with that as well.
Yeah. So we'll, we can, we'll certainly discuss that more at the next, uh, meeting. Uh, Carol had suggested that we talk about a, a service called Let's Talk. Um, and the goal of, Let's Talk is a, um, a system, like, you put it on the website, so on your district website page is a little, there'll be an icon says, there would be. Let's Talk, and you can click onto it. And it's a messaging system, so you would, a person from the public, or, I mean, a staff, or anybody, student, person from the public would be able to click in and reach an administrator or whoever else
Make a comment, ask a question.
Ask a question, express a concern, and they would be, uh, with Let's Talk, the district can say to the public, we are always listening. And our commitment and promise to you is responding to your communication within whatever we decide, twenty-four, forty-eight, seventy-two hours. Um, the system is completely customizable, we could operate via an app or not. Um, the goal is to, is to nurture the public trust and to build a community culture that embraces conversations, engaging conversations over time. Um, you said that we, I mean, one of our goals is to get people to feel more comfortable communicating with us, to ask questions before they jump to conclusions. Um, and this, this system would, i- it, it kind of tracks that kind of data, like, so now we kind of rely on an anecdotal understanding of, you know, the public's concern over a particular issue. Whereas this would give numbers behind that, we'd see, you know, really how many people are asking the same questions or concerned about the same issues, um, so
Is there a fee for this?
There, there is. There is, um, but, so we have a number of other school districts that are using this, uh, that you can, you know, click on and you can see how, how it's working for them and what they do with it. Um, Sandwich, Barnstable, um, Burlington, Vermont, Sioux City Schools, NIAC Schools, um
Sioux City, Iowa.
Yeah, they do it initially, yeah.
Indeed?
Yeah. You know, and they, they also have surveys, they have, but that's not part of this particular program. And was there anything else you wanted about it?
You know, it, we, we, we saw some very strong pros, but there were also some questions we had and, you know, we kind of wondered, well, how is it different than what we could currently do, other than there's an accountability factor? So now we get this report that says, you know, at each of the schools, at each of the main offices, you know, there were this many pe, things that came in, they were answered in this amount of average time. So you could, you could see if there were gaps in communication. We just weren't sure it was going to solve what we were hoping it might do, which is the back-and-forth communication. It, it definitely, because right now people have that opportunity, the only feature it does have that we don't have now is they can, people could submit it anonymously. So some people who might be initially uncomfortable bringing a question or concern forward because they didn't want to be identified, could do it anonymously and, you know, we'd still get the information, you know? So, uh, we, we left it this way, that we were gonna do a little more research. So Michael was gonna do a little research on maybe some other companies who do that same thing. So we could see whether or not the fee that would be, we, would be charged is reasonable, you know, for what we're gonna get for a product. Um, I, uh, emailed Jesse Lieb, who's the gentleman who came out.
And come in and present to us, I forgot to mention that.
Yeah, he, Jesse came in.
Oh, is Jesse the same one from, um, Connected?
So we, uh, Jesse, I reached back out to Jesse and said, okay, you know, there's some interest, but we have some questions and what, what we want is, um, names and contact, you know, districts in contact people that we could call and talk to, so we thought we'd distribute that when I get the list. He said he would get back to me on that. And then, of course, we were always talking about negotiating, you know, around the price, you know, do, do, if we went with that, you know, do we do some kind of prorated thing this year? Because we wouldn't get it started, you know, day one, and, you know, uh, maybe we only make a commitment to one year. Then if we wanted to go with something, you know, something over a couple of years, maybe we scale it up to the price he wants.
How much is it?
It was, uh, it was about seventy-five hundred dollars, I think we
For a full year.
But when you look at a fifteen million dollar, when you look at a fifteen million dollar budget, that's really a small amount of money. Yeah, we pay about sixty, pay about sixty-five hundred for Connected, do we?
I know, but I just remember, uh, when we, Connected, we had, you know, the PTA and the GEF like help fund
Initially, they did, yes.
That first year, so I know you're saying it is a smaller amount in a, in a budget that size, but
But we haven't budgeted for it.
Yeah, right.
So, so that's why we aren't coming forward with a recommendation to you for it, because we wanna make sure that there, you know, that there is the value for it. And if it's not this product, then maybe it's another product. But, you know, the goal here is we wanna develop a communication plan where we look at, you know, all of the various ways that we reach out, you know, through social networking, through back-and-forth conversation, you know, if we're gonna do a district satisfaction survey, you know, so I think it's all part of what we're putting together as a communication plan.
Right, and that was part of our, our goal for the
Who would be the people responding?
To who?
To the questions that
It could be anybody. So what it would do is you, so let's say you had some
If I sent anything and said, I, tell me what today's lunch is. I, I do have, I have a problem with that, sometimes I really need to know what it is.
Well, you could, and what would have
Ask Barry.
I mean, who made a commitment to forty-eight hours, you'd be
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Well, Monday, I think
It should be like an hour time.
Whoever we want, like, it could be department heads, it could be
So, so you select who
You might, we'll pick, we'll pick our favorite topic homework, okay? So you could, you could go on
You click on Let's Talk.
So up pops this prompt screen that basically says, you know, I am a, you say, I am a school community member, a parent, whatever, whatever way you want to be identified. Um, I, I have a, um, I have a question, comment, concern, right, no, I mean, whatever it would be. And then you literally type it in, and I wanna direct this to whoever, and send it.
Whether it's the principal and, and would it give you a dropdown menu or
It's a listing.
It's a listing.
Just the way it's set up.
And then you would go, then it would go directly to that person only. It doesn't go to, well, I, I guess I get to see everything, but it goes to that person directly. And then that person responds, and that, and it, it logs a response, it logs a question, it logs a response. It logs the num, the amount of ti, you know, the response time, all of that.
Can I ask you a question then?
Yeah.
Goes with this, um, would this then be a union issue too? Because it would involve, like, extra time for these teachers or
Kind of like an email, I mean, in theory it's supposed to reduce
A lot different from headline, the teachers have to respond, you know, by emails or post things. And that was a, that was a contractual, that, that was in the contract.
Yeah, this is more, um, the, the te, the, the teachers wanted to participate in this. If they had a question that they wanted to ask me, or they wanted to ask Joan, they, it would just like they would send me an email right now, they'd go to Let's Talk and, and, and put it in. So it's not really gonna impact teachers in a different way, if, because originally what we were talking about doing is just doing it at central office level first, and then, you know, principal level. We were not necessarily ever envisioning this Let's Talk as the teachers are now gonna get emails, but we, we never, we didn't get that far.
But Jesse mentioned that in some districts, half the users were staff.
Mm-hmm.
Half the
To amongst the children?
Half the users, meaning that they used it to communicate with each other, with administrators, exactly, yeah, exactly. But I think Barbie was asking if it was a contractual, so if the teachers, if the parents use Let's Talk to talk directly to the teacher.
Well, let's say if it was a homework issue, you would think
But you could, you could set this up to specifically, so you, you can pick and choose who gets the email, so if it were to be a union issue, you just wouldn't include teachers
Right, exactly.
As one of the options.
And you can pick topics.
So you can pick who it goes
No, I'm just thinking at our level, would the union say to us, well, you're signing up for this program, and the teachers may be required, you're gonna be logging their time, like, their response time?
Yeah, I don't think we were looking at it at the teacher level.
Okay.
I, I, I didn't think we were, yeah. I think this was more, you know, that we, as administrators, we, we always assume that the teachers are going through headline or they're going through a teacher email. But again, we didn't get that far.
I don't know, maybe my
It might be a que, it might be a question.
Maybe my disconnect here is PR, I was thinking the school and the community, and it sounds like though Jesse was saying one school is fifty percent with amongst the staff.
The teachers as users, so that may, a teacher maybe has a question of a department head or a principal, right?
Right, to, to another person.
Anybody can use it.
Right, so, well, I know that, but I was just thinking that it would be, um, more like if a community member had a question about the school.
Well, that's definitely
For the teacher, or for, for the principal?
For, any, anybody, any, you know, regarding the schools.
So we would wanna, we would wanna look at that, because as Michael said, we can decide who, who the response people are. And we can decide by, to talk to the public about, these are the people that you can ask any question to.
Right.
Right, so if you have a question about any of these topics or any of these, the, you know, for, question about business, budget, whatever, you could direct it to the, to the finance director. So, in other words, we might not list teachers as one of the, one of the groups that we use this for, but it, there's, we, we really talked about it on a surface level. We, we, we don't, we don't know if it really would meet our
Called Let's Talk, yeah.
We really don't know if it would meet our needs.
Talk to s, some people in districts who are using it and find out what's their, what has their experience been, has it been, you know, a good thing?
Okay.
Yeah, so that was just a conversation, but it made sense to bring Jesse out because, you know, I, I was never gonna be able to explain the product like he was, you know, so
It was nice to be able to kind of see it.
It was nice to see it.
Just a copy.
Oh, okay, oh, thank you.
You know?
Thank you.
Yeah, so that's what we did.
Okay.
And that's it?
Okay, thank you for that. Um, Gordon College, we don't have to go into that because Um, the special education mid-cycle review.
Yeah, so actually, um, it's really in, Donna was, um, at a, um, a visit to one of our residential schools today, uh, and that was about three hours away. So I said to her, just don't drive three hours down, three hours back, and then come to the school meeting for, for this discussion, because quite honestly, you know, as you can, um, as you can see, we did really well, um, on this, there's just one, there was just one, uh, place, uh, where she, where it was not implemented. Um, it had to do with documentation and written notice and a process to discontinue services.
So Carol, the last time we got this, it was the same
What do you mean?
It was the same, find, I've already seen this.
Well, the last time you would have seen it would have been, um, they just came for a follow-up visit. And that, this is the result of it. So what you might have seen is, these are So what you might have seen is these are the findings.
Yeah, okay.
So what they put in here is the findings and now, and now they're rating them.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so they, we were, the la- when they came in the past, we, these were the issues they identified. And then we've had a chance to remediate them, that's, and then they came out and they looked specifically at that and now the rating is implemented.
Except for this one.
Except for the one.
Right, no, I know, that's what I'm saying though, this one that says not implemented, I've already seen that.
Well, you probably did, cause it was a finding.
Yeah.
So now, this is showing you that, that based on the finding, what we did either satisfied them or didn't satisfy them. What they're saying here is it didn't quite satisfy them.
Right.
So it, they're basically saying, go back at it again and give us a revi- a revision. And I did talk with Donna about it and she said, I've already got a plan for it, you know, I've already submitted it. Um, I don't see it, I don't see an issue. So, I mean, we were very happy, uh, to get this because remember, there were a lot of transition in special ed.
Mm-hmm.
You know, a lot of transitions in the coordinators and, you know, to, to, and Donna's been here two years and she really cleaned up a lot of things in a very short period of time.
Yeah, to only have one in there.
And this reflects that.
So she has that under control?
She has it all under control, but I did want you to, um, you know, to be aware. We just received it recently, you know, so this was the first meeting, I figured it would be good to get it in your pocket, your pocket.
Okay. We did the school tours, the, um, okay, we need to approve the, um, updated policy JICFB regarding bullying prevention.
Right, so, uh, part of our administrative retreat this past week was we, uh, we met with attorney Matt McAvoy from Sullivan and Nuttall. And, uh, we had asked Matt to help us, uh, given the new legislation that is, has recently been passed, to give us with the discipline law and the bullying prevention law, uh, legislation, to basically advise us on what needed to be changed in our current policy to make sure we were completely compliant with all of the new regulations. And you can see that what he did is he used the track changes. And I just put it in here so you could see exactly what he was, what he was changing. Um, and then we went over this, uh, with the administrators. They will go over the final policy and the changes with their faculty and staff as part of their faculty meetings and then their faculty handbooks. But I normally would go through governance with this. But, you know, I figured, given the fact that, you know, school's gonna open, handbooks are gonna need to be adjusted and those kind of things, um, you know, we, we wouldn't wanna be giving an old policy to the faculty if we could avoid that. So since it's a modification, only takes your, your vote. Um, so I wanted to just put it in, uh, and if, if you're, if you're comfortable, uh, you know, voting the changes, um, then we'll distribute it to staff. If you feel like you need more time with it, then we'll, we'll do it in September and, and, and do it. It's, it's really your, it's really your choice.
I'll take a vote, let's see.
Okay.
Um, the chair will entertain a motion to approve updated policy filed JICFB bullying prevention and intervention as presented.
So moved. Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we will post this on our, um, on our, our website and get it distributed.
I liked that.
It's easy, yeah, it's easy to tell.
Easy to, yeah, you just can do anything. Recommendation of the attorneys and that sounds good to me.
Right, okay, um. So there's no need for an executive session this evening, my agenda looks clear, so we are going to, um, uh, for the meeting to be adjourned at nine forty. Aye.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Have a good night.